Okay, well, good afternoon, everybody. Councillors, welcome to this special meeting. Welcome to the members of the public who are in the gallery. Welcome to those who are joining us via live stream and welcome to our staff. Can I commence by asking the chamber to be upstanding as I acknowledge the traditional custodians, please? On behalf of council, I would like to start today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the Sunshine Coast local government area, the Karbi-Karbi peoples of the coastal plains, and the Northern Hinterland, and those whose traditional lands we gather on today, and the Ynaburra people of the Southern Hinterland. We wish to pay respect to elders past, present, and emerging, and acknowledge the important role First Nations people continue to play in our Sunshine Coast community. Thank you. Please be seated. There are no... Well, no one away on leave of absence, no apologies. Item three, councillors, I'd like to remind you and draw to your attention that on the 12th of October 2020, amendments to the Local Government Act 2009 and the Local Government Regulation 2012 came into force. The amendments include the new Chapter 5B, which sets out new legislative requirements for dealing with councillors' conflicts of interest in local government matters, and these arrangements will be how we manage such matters at this meeting. So if anybody has any conflict of interest to raise, now is the time to do it. Councillor's item 4.1 is the Sunshine Coast Mass Transit Options Analysis, and I invite Leah Bancroft and James Coates to give us a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start out by giving a brief introduction to the options analysis that we're asking you to consider today. So in that options analysis, what we're asking you to consider is by endorsing the options analysis, council will be deciding to advance towards a better public transport system for the whole of the Sunshine Coast, and in particular, provide the basis for the state government to determine the most appropriate mass transit system to serve the urban corridor between Maridord City Centre and the Sunshine Coast University Hospital. Importantly, by endorsing the options analysis, council's not being asked to make an investment decision, nor to endorse a particular mass transit option. It's also not being asked to enable high-rise development along the beachfront or indeed throughout the entire urban corridor. And it's also not providing the basis for a planning scheme amendment. I wave an overview of the context in which a project like this has to be considered. And we talk here in terms of the three tiers of government: the Australian Government, the Queensland Government, and the local government. At the Australian Government level, looking at various Australian government directions, there's a significant degree of strategic alignment. So the Australian Infrastructure Plan 2021, so it's a very current plan, identifies a need for Australia to upgrade its urban passenger transport networks to meet growth. And that document does acknowledge Sunshine Coast and identifies it as a key growth region in Australia. The Smart Cities Plan, which now dates back to 2016, includes a concept of a 13-minute city, which will be achieved by delivering a high-frequency service connecting key population, employment, education, and recreation centres. The Urban Transport Strategy, which now dates back to 2013 but still remains relevant, includes objectives to support more efficient, resilient, and integrated transport systems on the Sunshine Coast. And that's a high-level snapshot of Australian government situation. When it comes to the Queensland Government and the strategic alignment there, we of course have Shaping SEQ, which is the regional plan for South East Queensland. That dates back now to 2016. And it contains a range of themes around managing growth, prosperity, connectivity, sustainability, and livability. And across all those themes, the strategic alignment, but particularly when it comes to things like moving people, products, and information efficiently, and promoting ecological and social sustainability. Related to that is the State Infrastructure Plan that's updated periodically. And it has as a priority increasing the capacity and resilience of South East Queensland's transport system. The South East Queensland Regional Transport Plan, only released earlier this year, worked in partnership, looks to work in partnership with the Sunshine Coast Council to develop a business case for an integrated urban public transport solution for Maridord to Caloundra. At the council's level, and perhaps most particular for us, our own corporate plan, endorsed in February this year. So it's the current corporate plan, which contains the commitment that we will progress the Sunshine Coast mass transit business case in partnership with the community and other tiers of government. Our own Integrated Transport Strategy refers to council developing a business case for light rail, now known as mass transit, to submit to the state government. And the Environment and Livability Strategy talks about getting around the Sunshine Coast being supported by an effective and efficient network of active and contemporary public transport systems. One of the other strategic areas of importance for us is obviously our own planning scheme, the Sunshine Coast Planning Scheme. And the provision of the current scheme, albeit dating back to 2014, talk about the intent for a public transport network serving the corridor and that being a feature. It's identified as the Maridord to Caloundra Priority Transit Corridor in the current planning scheme. It's shown, and you can see there, it's that light blue line to the east. A significant proportion of the projected growth of the Sunshine Coast is already provided for in the current planning scheme, but particularly in the urban corridor between Maridord and Caloundra. And there is an intention there of there being a frequent, reliable, protected local PT network, public transport network, and that's needed to support our growing population in the immediate future. I think it's important to remember the exercise we're undertaking here. It's a business case process. It's unlike almost anything else we do, and it's driven by the requirements of the state government and the Commonwealth Government under various business case development frameworks. Turning first to the state government business case development framework, and the options analysis, the second stage of a three-stage business case process set down by Building Queensland, which is now part of the relevant state government agency. The draft options analysis that we released considered the long list of options and recommends a shortlisted option to proceed to the detailed business case stage. And that's been carried through to the finalized version of that document. Importantly, and it goes to what I said right at the outset of this meeting, is the investment decision can only be made following the detailed business case. And then only if the evaluation has determined the preferred option presents value for money. That value for money usually being expressed in terms of what's called a benefit cost ratio, BCA, sorry. So the other framework that we have to have regard for is the Infrastructure Australia process. Now, you might have seen in your report that we make reference to the fact that we intend to submit a template should you endorse the options analysis stage to submit to Infrastructure Australia. Infrastructure Australia Has Flag, there was a newsletter released around the middle of this year, that flags an intention to overview or overhaul their business case development framework to some extent, and they've set down a list of topics for that. We're not yet clear about the implications of that, but it is, based on past experience, is likely to result in the need for the document to be perhaps reformatted or reworked to some extent. So we draw that to your attention simply so you know that if this thing does not proceed before the end of this calendar year, we'll be confronted with that situation. Having said that, we've been there before. The Queensland Business Case Development Framework changed early last year, requiring us to revise the format and content of the document that we released publicly. But we're just drawing it to your attention. So council submitted a Stage 1 template in 2019 when we completed the strategic business case. And submitting the options analysis to Infrastructure Australia would be the Stage 2 of this process. And you'll see the stages. There's not a perfect alignment, unfortunately, between state and Commonwealth requirements, there really is. But those stages, the Stage 2 there, is about identifying and analysing options, which is the stage we're at. And that Stage 2 template allows for our project to be considered as a potential investment option in the infrastructure priority list. Following completion of the detailed business case, the project would be considered an investment-ready proposal, which takes you through to the third and then potentially the fourth stages. To touch on the content of the strategic business case and what underpinned it, this is a diagram, it's impossible to escape. It shows the degree of change that the Queensland Government statistician projects will occur on the Sunshine Coast over the next 25 years, or the 25 years between 2016 and 2041. What you can see in that is that in 2016, the vast majority of our concentrated activity, and bearing in mind this diagram represents the concentration of both population and jobs, was in the area bounded by black there, which we euphemistically call the urban corridor. And what you can see as the growth of the Sunshine Coast proceeds, adding the additional 200,000 or so people to this place, you certainly see the footprint extent. But the concentration of growth remains in that black, within that black line. And that's perhaps understandable, particularly when it comes to jobs. Population can and sometimes does disperse. Jobs rarely do. And so even if the population was dispersed, it would actually exacerbate the extent to which the urban corridor would be an attraction for traffic and congestion because people would be accessing jobs in that corridor. And that's perhaps most aptly illustrated by these two diagrams that show you the degree of traffic congestion that is projected to occur over that same period. So the cost of that congestion currently is about half a billion dollars for the Sunshine Coast. And you would hear daily, traffic congestion's a nightmare. If you look at 2041, today's nightmare is the future's sweet dreams. Because that traffic congestion grows to $3 billion, the cost to the community. And while you'll see traffic congestion extends to other parts of the network, it is concentrated and becomes its worst in the urban corridor for the very reasons I mentioned before. So the strategic business case was endorsed by council back in July 2019, and it looked to support the development and improve public transport system for the Sunshine Coast and assess, the business case assessed, the region's economic, land use, and transport challenges. It's for the purposes of that report called problems. And considered the initiatives to address those challenges or problems. It defined the priority for more detailed investigations into mass transit for the region. And it did provide a clear basis for proceeding with the preparation of the options analysis, considering the provision of mass transit system in the urban corridor between Maridord City Centre and the Sunshine Coast University Hospital at Betina as the first stage. And that leads us to the draft options analysis. And as foreshadowed in the strategic business case, the first stage of the mass transit system connected the key destinations from the city centre to the university hospital. That area is decided as the highest priority because it contains the greatest concentration now of population, jobs, facilities, and services, and is already experiencing growing traffic congestion. As you can see from this plan of the route of Stage 1, it largely follows the main roads, including Nickel and Way, and is the most feasible route to accommodate a mass transit system and the route that links the key activity centres and destinations in the urban corridor. I think there's a mistaken view amongst some that this was our mass transit intention for the Sunshine Coast long term. It is but Stage 1 of the introduction of this plan. So this plan was the master plan that was first promulgated in the strategic business case, and was included and amplified in the options analysis document. And that master plan proposes continuing upgrades to the Biowat to Nambal rail line, the provision of regional rail from Biowat to Maridord City Centre in the Cancos corridor, a local mass transit system in the Sunshine Coast urban corridor, and a high-frequency bus network, and a feeder bus network, linking key locations further on the coast within the hinterland. So a comprehensive pattern and network of public transport to serve the whole Sunshine Coast. However, as I said, in implementing a plan of this kind, we're talking decades and many, many billions of dollars. And you have to start somewhere. Business cases look to bite off chunks that are digestible, and that chunk was identified as that area between Maridord and Kiwanah. And what you can see from that when you look at it in more detail is the coincidence and the interconnectedness and the coalescence of Cancos rail, the Northern Park, and Sunshine Coast mass transit Stage 1, and how that reflects in the type of catchments. So on those plans, you'll see the yellow and green areas, the yellow on the plan on the left and the green on the plan on the right, is your four, five-minute walk-up catchment. It's where people are most easily attracted to utilise public transport in any form. Their attraction to utilise that comes down to the quality of the service, its frequency, its convenience, its comfort, its directness. And the blue and pink areas talk about a 10-minute walk-in catchment. That's traditionally regarded as the furthest extent that people are likely to walk, but when you get a really good public transport service, people walk way further than that. But the important thing for this is to look at the culmination of the population for those two catchments. And what that means for a truly interconnected and effective means of increasing public transport patronage. And you see the population within that 800-metre walk-up catchment and news station approaches 78,500 people. Only, well, there's five times as many people able to access the local mass transit, just as you'd expect. Because it connects the key population centres, the key job locations, compared to the Cancos system, where stations are spread much further apart. Bearing in mind, it's a heavy rail system, and the frequency of service is by comparison much, much lower. But it's not to say it's not an important service. It's an incredibly important thing to do to connect our city centre to the centre of South East Queensland. Those two services operating in unison will be in a phenomenally powerful way of getting people around on the Sunshine Coast when traffic congestion that you saw before becomes a less-than-powerful way of getting around the Sunshine Coast. So the options analysis had a number of highlights at the draft stage. And it talks about the fact that we are the largest regional centre in Australia without a mass transit system, at least of any note. We have, regrettably, we've won the silver medal as being the second highest car ownership in Australia, only after Perth. Those two factors together, and the absence of good quality public transport and high-car ownership, are leading to those congestion figures that I mentioned before, the $3 billion per annum in 2041. And so a regional mass transit plan of the kind I've just mentioned to you is the response to those problems. And prioritising things like our principal activity centre with improved public transport will make an incredible difference. And a long list of transport options was evaluated. And the preliminary assessment for a shortlisted range of options was what was put forward and recommended in the draft options analysis document. And they range in cost from just shy of half a billion dollars for what's called a quality bus corridor, to around about $1.8 billion for the light rail variant. And these are nominal costs, so in today's values. Transport, the outcome's in terms of boardings, around 25,000 boardings now, increasing to more than 60,000 when a system of this kind is introduced. And the economics, what is the benefit? The benefit cost ratio that I referred to before ranges from 0.7 up to 1.2 depending on which variant you look at. All of which, for a public transport project, are quite healthy figures. So I might hand over at this stage to my colleague Leah, who will take you through the engagement process. And it was very remiss of me at the beginning not to acknowledge the presence of our community engagement consultants. We have Amanda Newberry and Bernard Huston here today to answer any of your questions when we come to the detail of that engagement outcome.
Thank you, James.
Thank you. Okay, the purpose of the engagement on the draft options analysis was to ensure that the options analysis stage of the mass transit business case was informed by stakeholder and community feedback. Specifically, we sought to invite consideration of the benefits and the impacts of the various mass transit options that were being considered so that that could further inform the consideration of those options in the detailed business case. The consultation, as James said, was underpinned by the draft of the options analysis report, which was released at the commencement of engagement. And the final options analysis report, which has been informed by the engagement, Arthur will speak to that. So there were three main components to the engagement that we sought feedback on. The first was the mass transit options. That included seeking feedback on the important features of mass transit, the mass transit master plan, which James referred to, the mass transit route, and also the options, as I said. In addition, we also sought feedback on land use scenarios, looking at various ways that we could accommodate the projected growth within the urban corridor. And thirdly, we looked at place-making opportunities. So the features that people actually wanted most in the coastal corridor, what made the place special to ensure that that was protected, and any memorable experiences that they had for that urban corridor that they wanted to share. The engagement process for the draft options analysis was extensive and very broad-ranging. And we did that to try and make sure that we got to as many people as possible, but that we also got to have some in-depth conversations with the community about why the options analysis was actually being undertaken and the need for a mass transit system on the coast. The engagement ran for eight weeks, and we did more than 50 engagement activities. That included a range of pop-up events at libraries, at markets, shopping centres. We had sessions with the virtual reality goggles that people could actually experience what the different mass transit options, it would be like to actually be on them or beside them. We had community roundtable events where we actually got to have that in-depth discussion. And the same with the inquiry by design in the intergenerational forum. So that allowed a real in-depth discussion of the problems that the coast was facing and the options to actually try and address that. There were also presentations by active interest groups. We did a range of school briefings. And we did a range of community and stakeholder briefings where we went out to organisations and presented on the options analysis and the options that were being considered. And we did the online survey. So in undertaking the engagement, we used a range of collateral and tools to not only inform people about the project and why it was being undertaken, but also to gather feedback, which we could use to inform the options analysis, which would then inform the preparation of the detailed business case. So the collateral included the project brochure, a lot of e-newsletters, were sent out, postcards, fact sheets, a whole of myths and facts, pull-up banners. So a lot of that information was to actually invite, let people know how they could actually have their feedback, but also provided information about the various options and the things that we were seeking feedback on. And we had a range of tools, including the website, which was well-utilised, radio, bus ads, Facebook, LinkedIn. So one of the main tools that we used to gather feedback was the survey. And over the eight weeks of the engagement period, we received 3,894 unique surveys. And more than half of those responses came from residents who actually lived within the corridor. 7.3% of the respondents were under 30, compared to 34.6% of under 30s that are actually on the Sunshine Coast. So that group was underrepresented. 32% of the respondents were aged between 30 and 50, as compared to 25.2% for the whole of the Sunshine Coast. And 46.6% of respondents were aged between 50 and 70, compared to 26.5% for the Sunshine Coast. So the key findings, which Articulus have prepared in the engagement report, which is attached to the options analysis, provides detail on all of the findings of the engagement activities. But in summary, and this game I said is the key findings from across all of the engagement activities, not the survey alone. And that's that most people, so 68%, believe a good mass transit system is important for the Sunshine Coast. They believe the attributes of a good public transport system, a frequency, reliability, and convenience. And that we know that these attributes were best achieved by four of the five recommended options. And those were bus rapid transit, trackless tram, the light rail, and the wireless light rail. Opinions were divided about the five recommended options proceeding to the detailed business case. 45% were satisfied that all five options should move forward, and 46% were unsatisfied that they should go forward. So there was no majority view either way. However, the majority of under 50s were satisfied that all options should proceed to the detailed business case. And the majority of over 60s were dissatisfied with that. Of those that were dissatisfied, one-third were still supportive of at least one of those options proceeding to the detailed business case. The engagement concerns were also expressed about the light rail with overhead wires. And the options analysis, which Arthur will talk to in more detail, has actually recommended this as a matter to be subject to further consideration in the detailed business case. The final summary finding was that there is a strong desire to maintain green space and beachside amenity and to improve active transport networks. And these are also matters to be foreconsidered in the preparation of the detailed business case. So I'll now hand over to Arthur, who will take you through the finalized options analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillors. So, next slide, please. What I want to do now is quickly summarise what the finalized options analysis says from a recommendations point of view. So firstly, we want to work with the state government, noting the role of Transport and Main Roads as the responsible government agency for the provision of public transport services and infrastructure. We want to work with them on progressing to the detailed business case stage for local mass transit Stage 1, as James identified. Noting, of course, as well, that the department would separately also focus on Cancos, the Cancos work, the heavy rail work, which is of equivalent importance. So we make it clear that we're focused on the local mass transit function and the role of regional rail in the Cancos corridor is about the more regional function of the network. And that's articulated in our Integrated Mass Transit Strategy about the role and function of the various forms of public transport in that master plan. And the third piece to that puzzle is the high-frequency bus network and the connections of the entire Sunshine Coast region onto that mass transit system, which is also the responsibility of Transink Division within the department. And you have to stage this thing out. You can't just bring on light rail or any other mode or bus rapid transit tomorrow. It needs to be a stage rolled out for public transport services. Next slide, please. No, this is one of the options.
councillor Natali, if you want to ask a question, you should put your light on. I'll acknowledge you, and you can ask your question.
So yes, the light rail is one of the five options that's being proposed to progress through to the detailed business case stage, along with bus rapid transit, trackless tram, wireless light rail, and what's called the quality bus corridor. What's also being recommended is a consideration What's also being recommended is a consideration, greater investigation between Marichidor and Mulilaba in terms of the Alexandra Parade corridor. The finalisation of the options analysis did spend a bit of time analysing that further. There was a key concern that was raised from the community and the options analysis took that analysis further, but further work is needed in terms of what the detailed business case covers, in terms of more detailed property impacts and other impacts and benefits in terms of the options there. The detailed business case should also focus on how we coordinate the investment in mass transit and transport infrastructure more generally in the region. So at the time that the options analysis was done, certain work, like the middle of the river interchange, was still a bit progressing itself through government commitment and its detailed business case. Now that there's a greater commitment to that investment, that kind of work needs to be considered in the transport modelling for how the mass transit and other forms of transport are considered within the Sunshine Coast, along with Kewanna arterial and other bus network improvements. What also typically occurs through the detailed business case stage is progressing that further comprehensive engagement of the community. So greater community engagement is expected to occur through that next phase as well, subject to council endorsement today. Next slide, please. But there's other elements to this as well. So council has a key role in supporting the greater place making outcomes within a public transport investment like this. So the place making is critical to realise the true benefits at a local level. The integration of transport and land use is fundamental to ensure we get the best outcomes for a planning point of view. At the same time, there's also the impacts of local businesses that need to be considered and greater integrated moving forwards. Some of the feedback, we received a lot of feedback on the draft options analysis. Some of the feedback wasn't necessarily attributable to the finalisation of the options analysis. Instead, it's been captured in other processes, as James touched on before, like the planning scheme. And finally, council should also support actions to progress the planning scheme, as I mentioned, the place making, parking management and of course, active transport connections. I think that is it from me. Thank you. I'll hand back to James. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Arthur. And so just finally, where to from here? So the potential process that we're talking about, as I said, subject to council endorsing the options analysis as presented to you with the report, it'll be progressed to the state government through, for what is called a gateway review. That's a process that they apply to projects submitted through a detailed business case arrangement. And that we anticipate pending council's endorsement would occur late this year or early 2022. And I mean that, when I mean that, I mean the gateway review process. A detailed business case typically takes around nine to 12 months to complete. And so therefore, we're anticipating that if they get underway, they should be completed by late 2022, i.e. the end of next calendar year. And that would also result in an Infrastructure Australia submission. The detailed business case would provide the basis for an investment decision. And only a detailed business case can do that. And that investment decision is made by the state and potentially the Australian governments with a request for local government contribution likely, but it's a request that can only be made and only can be considered when we know what that potential investment would be and when it actually becomes a project. Subject to the investment decision, the readiness for market stage would commence consideration of the preferred procurement and delivery approach from the detailed business case. That could be as far away as 2024, 2025. A preliminary analysis suggests there could be value for money in pursuing this as a public-private partnership, which has been common for projects of this kind around the country. But that would be well after the detailed business case process is concluded and would come at the end before an investment decision is made. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
councillor Babroski.
Honouredness, the Transport Portfolio councillor to move the officer recommendations.
Thank you. One second, please. Councillor Hungerford, thank you. Would you like to open, councillor Babroski?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just might mention, I'm still struggling a little bit with an ear infection and I would ask your indulgence to speak from a seated position. Of course, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Councillors, from its inception, from the inception back in the Bob Abbott days of council to today, this process has been about grasping the reality if we did not act, the vast deficit of planning and investment in public transport in our region would only grow bigger. We have been caught in a spiralling congestion, crisis of congestion, and this project offers us a chance at a solution. Councillors, we know, as you've heard, we are not making a decision today on the technology, nor are we locking in a route. But what our job is, is to present a shortlist of viable options, and as you've heard, not just for one location, but for a technology that can and will expand across the region and scale up as we grow. It is pretty obvious that the Sunshine Coast has a congestion crisis now. It also now has a rental and housing affordability crisis, and we, along with the rest of the world, are facing a climate crisis. Progressing today on mass transit will help all three of these challenges now. But if we don't progress today, the timeframe to act gets taken out of our hands. So in terms of congestion, COVID has accelerated our growth. So population growth is coming with or without mass transit. Mass transit will provide our first real alternative to cars and would reduce congestion for those who still choose to drive. In terms of our housing crisis, virtually no rentals. Many Sunshine Coasters feel they have now missed out on getting into the housing market. Mass transit means more housing options, medium density, not high-rise, around the transit stations, exactly the kind of accommodation young people and first homeowners and buyers need. So mass transit can be part of this solution. In terms of the climate crisis we're all facing, let us remind ourselves that transport is the third largest source of emissions in Queensland. And the major part of that are our private cars. Given the enormity of the climate challenge, I wouldn't want my legacy to be stalling the momentum of the most significant public transport proposal in this region's history. We all know public transport is far more energy efficient than cars, and mass transit can create the convenient, frequent, reliable journey times that with good quality ride is absolutely essential to get significant mode shift from cars to public transport. And the reality is, we're not going to reach our target of 70, 20, 10 without it. I want to acknowledge and thank everybody who contributed to the engagement process. We've listened. Your input has shaped the final document and will continue to shape our approach, assuming we move forward. Councillors, I'm pretty sure the antagonists to this report will try and present our web survey, just one part, one part of the 50 engagements, as if it were a referendum. It was never its purpose. Its purpose was to gather, as you heard, qualitative feedback on each of the specific options to be considered then in the detailed business case. And it's done that. By its nature, a self-selecting web survey is unlikely to represent the broader community's views. You've heard, for example, that young people were overwhelmingly satisfied with the options presented, including over 70% of those under 30. However, not nearly as many young people answered the survey, so that's going to skew the totals. Perhaps more importantly, out of the 23 suburbs with the most responses, 15, 15 were supportive of the options moving forward. Only seven were dissatisfied. There were majorities of support in Golden Beach, Bligh Bligh, Caloundra West, Sippy Downs, Marichidor, Coolum Beach, to name a few. However, again, there were many more responses coming from the dissatisfied suburbs. So those suburbs shout their numbers louder than the many more supportive suburbs. If anything, this survey demonstrates that even in the face of a large coordinated campaign based largely on misrepresentation...
Can I get you an extension?
Yeah.
Happy to move councillor Cox, councillor Johnson, second those in favour. Let's carry unanimously, carry on councillor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillors. So let me repeat that bit. If anything, this survey demonstrates that even in the face of the large coordinated campaign based largely on misrepresentation, most Sunshine Coast suburbs support the process moving forward. Let me repeat that because it's so important. The web survey's purpose was to gather specific qualitative feedback on technology options and, as you heard, place making and urban forms. For example, we heard that some residents of the beachside communities oppose poles, wires, physical barriers to the beach, and we listened. That's in the report. But that doesn't mean we should take light rail out of the options analysis with advice from engineers. It is the role of the detailed business case to assess whether it's possible to implement light rail, in this case, in a way that avoids or minimises physical barriers, poles, wires in those areas. So prejudging that question in one location and therefore limiting options for the whole network just doesn't make sense. Councillors, if we choose not to move forward today, we throw away a decade-long process and likely millions of dollars. As you know, these options analysis needs to be submitted by the end of 2021 to be considered in the next round of Infrastructure Australia priorities. If we miss this window, as you've heard, we may have to substantially rewrite the entire document. Further, if we don't move forward today, we risk losing $7.5 million state government funding commitment. Effectively, we'd be back to stage one with no state government partner. Councillors, much more than just transport, mass transit is a way to address social justice and equity issues. Not every family can afford two cars, and many struggle to afford one. Currently, that puts you at a severe disadvantage on the Sunshine Coast because of our size and distribution. You've heard, we're the second most car-dependent region in the country. To be sustainable, to be our best selves, we need to change that. Our goal has always been to get the state government engaged and on the journey in delivering an integrated public transport infrastructure system that our region needs. Progressing to this next stage of the process, we will have remarkably achieved that. Strategically, we've won, unless, of course, today we snatch defeat from the jaws of victory.
Thank you councillor Babroski. Councillor Dixon.
Yeah, through you, Mr Mayor. I've just got a number of questions, if you will allow me to do so. Earlier, Mr Coates talked about investment decision and that there's no investment decision today. I know that he's got a fair bit of history in this space. I'm just wondering if you could outline the journey on the Gold Coast. I understand that they have something similar to us, like a transport levy. And I understand that current amount costs each ratepayer $150 a year, where we're only at $44 a year. How did the Gold Coast go about raising that revenue? What were the challenges with its residents? And would you expect that this council will have to significantly increase our transport levy to meet that future investment for light rail or mass transit?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Unfortunately, that's not a question I can answer with any certainty at this point in time. And the reason is that we don't know at this point in time what technology will emerge from the detailed business case. The council would not be in a position to write a blank cheque of that kind. And the Gold Coast did not confront that decision until it had been through a process such as a detailed business case. So it wasn't turning its mind to what it needed to do to encourage the state and Commonwealth to put their hands in their much deeper pockets to fund the investment in light rail there until they were clear what their component was and of what type of project. Their process for arriving in that was different to today's because the business case process was somewhat different, but the coincidence of the outcome is the same. They certainly, in considering how they would best meet the challenge of funding, making a contribution towards the capital cost, did do it through a transport levy to a significant degree. My understanding, and it will be the case everywhere, is that none of the cost of operating the public transport network is borne by the local government. That's a state government responsibility and will always be that, here, there, wherever. The capital component is a different issue, and typically on large projects of this kind, there's been some cost sharing of the vast majority of the value of the project between the state and Commonwealth, with what you would have seen over the years on various projects arm wrestling between the state and Commonwealth above would be their respective contribution. Local government in that process is usually a bit player. And the contribution, whatever relatively small amount, has typically been, has been on the basis that it keeps the local government in the room and part of the implementation of the project. So I can't be precise about what decision we're going to have to make until we know what project we're asked to make a decision about. And it would only be at that time and responsibly that a council could make any form of commitment of that kind.
Yeah, I appreciate your responses there. Just if you can, you might want to stand up again if possible. Do you know the history on the Gold Coast in terms of what percentage the council, so the local government funded of that project? Was it 10%? Was it 20%? And if hypothetically light rail was, say, $1.8 to $2 billion, would this council on that sharing arrangement be looking to put up a similar amount? I know you can't be definitive, but I'm just looking at the trends and histories telling me the trend that the Gold Coast has put in their $150 each for the resident in terms of fee, and I think it was somewhere around 20% of the total cost. Just any historic facts or figures you can give would be great.
I might, when I get a chance, then Arthur might be able to answer that with a greater deal of definitive response than I can.
Did you just say what the amount was that you're asking James to bludgeon?
I was trying to figure out what that actual figure that the local council on the Gold Coast provided for light rail. I don't know. I've heard it's 10%. I've heard it's 20%. I'm just wondering what that is.
I will, through you, Mr Mayor, I'll do my best to answer that. My understanding is that it was around 10%. Importantly, in the most recent stage, stage three, that 10% was set on the basis of the investment decision at the time the project business case was completed. So the recent cost increases around that were borne between the state and Commonwealth and council's contribution was fixed. So it has not found itself having to fund that to any greater extent. Arthur, as my, my understanding of that, the 10%, yes, that's our understanding.
Mr Mayor, I just want to know if we do send this to the state government in its current form today as councillor Rick is moved. Let's say that the state government made a decision that the community and council weren't happy with. They selected an option that we may not support. What right or veto power do we have to actually tell the state government that they've made the wrong decision? So we sent the report on, let's say that they make a decision to go somewhere completely different, how do we then stop that?
Through you, Mr Mayor. As was mentioned earlier in one of our presentations, that the state government has committed to undertaking the detailed business case, committing seven and a half million towards what is estimated to be the $15 million dollar cost for that. Council is contributing the other half, the other seven and a half million. To use a colloquial term, that has us with equivalent skin in the game. So as a partner in that process, council will have a direct say in how the process proceeds. It will definitively be led by the Department of Transport and Main Roads. They're the state agency with responsibility for it. However, we are aiming to establish a memorandum of understanding and all... However, we are aiming to establish a memorandum of understanding and all kinds of other related mechanisms for ensuring that council maintains a strong degree of input and influence in that process. I can't assure you of the degree to which that influence or input will affect the outcome, but having been involved in similar partnership arrangements, I've rarely found that a partnership of that kind will produce a result that one or other party is incredibly unsatisfied with and the other party is satisfied with. Partnerships by their very nature result in outcomes that both parties are satisfied with.
Another question if I can through the mayor, and it's a hard one to answer and no one's got the cost on it, but given you're an expert in this space, you could probably have a guess, how much is CAMCOS worth?
Yeah, I was going to say that's the $64 billion question, that's too big, I forget. Through you Mr Mayor. Look, the North Coast Connect project looked at an overall project cost, I think in the order of around $5 billion. That was a process that I think council is aware of. It was headed up by a consortium largely comprising private sector interests. The Infrastructure Australia assessment of that North Coast Connect business case raised doubts about the veracity of that costing. It didn't comment whether it was too high, too low, but you really raise a doubt about costing unless you consider it too low, particularly where that costing has a direct influence on the benefit cost ratio that is achieved. So that business case produced a benefit cost ratio of 0.47. So less than half the cost could be offset by benefits that the project would yield. So Infrastructure Australia, in questioning the veracity of the $5 billion or so estimate, was saying that that was, a more correct cost would even further erode the benefit cost ratio outcome. The state has commenced another process of evaluating what it's called the heavy rail from Biar to the east coast. That should put us in a position of understanding that cost better, but if you look at the type of topography and landform that that connection has to traverse, so Biar, across Biar East, not so bad. Caloundra South, as far as the town centre, again, not so bad. Past that, you're into wetland areas, swampy areas and likely structures. Then heading north from the station at the Caloundra aerodrome, you have to tunnel under the ridge the Chippibag road runs on, and then past that point, not too far along the track, you're into the Maricha River and significant wetland and waterway areas there. And then progressing past that to try to find an alignment in the Sunshine Motorway Corridor.
Can you give us just, you go back a step, did you say the Maricha River and you made them a little?
It's a river, I'm sorry, yes, apologies, yeah, slipping the tongue, but not a Freudian word. So that connection all up, I would say that's good cause for Infrastructure Australia to seriously question the capacity for that to be delivered for a price tag of around $5 billion. My intuition, but it's going on nothing more than my experience of project to this scale, you could pretty much come close to doubling.
Okay, I appreciate that answer. When do you expect mass transit would start, regardless of, you know, what option, if it's dedicated bus lanes or light rail? When do we actually see the infrastructure on the ground? What's your hope?
Through you Mr Mayor, the programme or the process I outlined at the end of my presentation would suggest that a potential construction commencement date would be around the middle of this decade, so 2025, and a project of that kind would be probably a two to three year build. So potentially by 2027, we could see a system like this up and operating in that first stage.
Okay, so on that basis, let's say that hypothetically we had a system up and running by 2027, and we, let's just say it's light rail and it's in, we spent $1.8 to $2 billion, which is a lot of money, something really exciting comes along, new technology and we want to go there, what are our chances of ripping up the vitamined rails and the wires and poles and actually changing to something more sustainable? Does that happen? Have you seen any examples where heavy infrastructure like that is put in and then removed quickly?
To answer the, through you Mr Mayor, to answer your question in the order that you asked it, in terms of the alternative technologies that might be emerging, one of the key focuses of both the options analysis document, but most particularly in the detailed business case, and it's made reference in, clearly referenced in the recommendations, is that the detailed business case is to do a scan of all the potential emerging technologies. And in a significant sense, the options analysis document has already done that because it is included across those five options, a couple of options which are emerging and as yet untested. That is unusual in that a business case would typically only seek to evaluate projects where the performance on them is certain, and what we know from a quality bus corridor and what we know from light rail in its various forms, they are proven technologies in operation around the world now. The two other technologies which we included, trackless tram and bus rapid transit, are not yet fully tested, certainly in Australian conditions. The bus rapid transit vehicle is virtually identical to the metro vehicle that Brisbane City Council will be using in its metro system. That vehicle will be tested on that busway system in Brisbane, I understand, in the next six months or so, is my understanding. But until that happens, its ability to perform as is anticipated is not fully tested or known. And I might add that that system operates on a fully grade separated busway network, apart from a couple of small pinch points, and therefore can perform at a very high standard of service. We have, the trackless tram vehicle that I refer to is a technology emerging from China. It is designed and manufactured by a company called CRRC. That's a wholly Chinese government-owned entity. And it has produced this technology which is a bigger version of bus rapid transit. When I say bigger, it has more passenger carrying capacity because it utilises a high-speed rail technology in its suspension system to overcome the issues of once a vehicle gets beyond a certain length, you can't control the tail end under high-speed circumstances and varying pavement types, and so it looks to use that mechanism to control that. Yeah, I would add that light rail, which is bigger again, doesn't need any of those technologies because it operates with steel wheels on steel rails and the laws of physics keep the tail end heading along that same track. So one of the things that the business case process is intent on doing is to make sure that as technologies emerge and become potentially promising, they will be fully examined. We've heard a lot about hydrogen and the role that hydrogen can play. Hydrogen at the end of the day doesn't change the technology really in any substantial sense. It could be hydrogen applied in a bus, hydrogen applied in a bus rapid transit or trackless tram or a light rail vehicle. However, what it does do is provide the capacity to, if you like, decouple the vehicle from its power system by having an onboard, potentially onboard hydrogen fuel cell to generate the energy needed to propel the vehicle. Most of the hydrogen technology that I've seen so far and being tested by the large vehicle manufacturers are utilising hydrogen not to apply the power directly to the propulsion system, but to repower the battery onboard. So, and while that is very promising, particularly if the hydrogen is produced by low emitting sources such as solar or wind power, is of enormous attraction around sustainability. I've gone on a while now, so I've forgotten your second part of the question.
I think that gives me a clear direction on where I was going. I've got three more questions if I can. These are community engagement based questions if I can, and then I'll sit down and give others a fair crack at the questioning and talking. In terms of state and federal members, you know, we obviously need to work with our state and federal partners to get funding and election commitments on projects, very important, particularly on the Sunshine Coast because we do seem to miss out a fair bit. Can you give me any feedback about the quality of engagement we have with our state and federal members during the, I guess, community engagement phase? And out of the state and federal members on the coast, how many of them actually fully supported the report and more in particular light rail? It seems to me, from what I've seen and those I've spoken to, state and federal members on the coast didn't support light rail and were focused on CAMCOS. So just any views you can give me there.
So throughout the process of the preparation of the detailed business case and particularly leading, sorry, the options analysis, again, sorry, through you Mr Mayor. And in the lead up to the commencement of community engagement, we reached out to all of the state and Commonwealth members. The mayor wrote a letter of invitation to each of the state members and the federal members, inviting them to receive a briefing. A number of them took up that opportunity. I was part of briefings of Ted O'Brien, I briefed Andrew Wallace, it was a virtual meeting while he was in Canberra, we briefed Andrew Powell. From memory, none of the other members took up the offer of a briefing. So as far as I know, and from, I can only say what I've read in the media like everybody else, is that none of the LNP state members are in favour of what we're proposing with Sunshine Coast mass transit, preferring instead to be of the view that the provision of regional rail in the CAMCOS corridor would suffice to provide local mass transit. My understanding is that at a Commonwealth level, the view is similar, and that they are throwing their opinions behind the ability of regional rail in CAMCOS to provide that local mass transit function. In doing so, those who we briefed were explicitly advised about how regional rail and CAMCOS cannot do that in an effective way. Those who chose not to get a briefing, I have no idea about why they arrived at that decision.
Okay, I think that's fair, thank you very much. We've gone through statistics today about community consultation, we've heard about different age factors on the Sunshine Coast, younger, middle aged and our older residents. Do we have a clear figure, a very clear figure that says how many people were against the light rail option? So out of all the feedback you've received, do we have a statistic that says these many people objected or a percentage or a figure around light rail? Because I've heard figures that say a lot of people supported, you know, 68% supported a mass transit option, but do we know how many didn't support light rail?
So the most statistical information I can refer you to are the results of the survey, and the survey, when it came to each individual mass transit option, posed a series of questions, questions nine to 13 from recollection, so that's the five options. And that question didn't ask people to say whether they liked it or not, it simply asked them to identify what they thought the benefits or impacts would be. And that was seeking what we would call qualitative information to assist our understanding of how those options could be improved or could be considered in the detailed business case process. The results of that were not all that determinative in the sense that the vast majority or pretty much all five didn't attract a strong degree of support. But to be fair, light rail was the one that people, and so I'll go back a step, the answers that people gave were converted into expressions of sentiment. So when there's a benefit, yes, I think this is a good thing, and an impact, this is something we need to think about, so those were converted into sentiments, and perhaps if we get into this in more detail, Amanda or Ben Hart can assist. But that expression of sentiment saw around 15% of people express a positive sentiment on the basis of those benefits and impact opinions around light rail. Mind you, I don't think any of them from memory attracted more than 30%. And the, what you call negative sentiment on light rail was 45%. It's important to acknowledge in that, that again, that 45% as to 15%, neither represents a majority view, and in none of the questions did that sentiment attract a majority opinion. In fact, in many of the responses, those who chose to stay neutral or to not express an opinion at all are actually the majority. They chose to not express it. However, by the time those people got to question 14, when they were asked to say whether they were satisfied or dissatisfied with all of the options preceding to the detailed business case, almost all of those undecided had thrown their weight behind being satisfied. So the result of the answer to that question, which is by implication, an endorsement or otherwise of all five options, including light rail, that answer was 46% who were unsatisfied and 45% who were satisfied. Again, no clear majority. However, when you drill into the results, as was mentioned in the presentation, that when you look at the age cohort, that those under 50 were more satisfied, in fact, 51% in the 40s and 50s and those in their 20s and 30s were more than 70% satisfied with all five options. So it'd be fair to conclude out of that, that there's no clear majority, but depending on the age cohort, that that's a strong support, and we have to bear in mind the median age on the Sunshine Coast is 44. The median age being as many younger as there are older. So that younger cohort has expressed a strong degree of satisfaction with all five options preceding to the detailed business case.
I think that answers my question. My last one, Mr Mayor, thank you for your patience. Hopefully this gives a few of the others' questions answered as well. What do you think have been the biggest changes between having our options analysis in its original format, spending the $500,000 and then coming back? How would you elaborate on the major changes that you've seen and how well do you think that $500,000's been spent? What did it tell you that you didn't know?
Through you Mr Mayor, I might just check some of my notes on this. So the version of the options analysis you've received and is available on council's website presents the document with highlighted changes, so you can easily see where the document was changed. I would say that you can tell from the degree of change that it was anything but a superficial or a tokenistic review of that document. The document includes a further 50 pages than the version you saw in its draft form, and around a quarter of the other pages, the remaining pages, have some degree of change, sometimes a very substantial degree of change. And that really is a result of the time that people took to draw out their concerns and their views and their positive sentiments about what they read in the options analysis or the information we provided to them. And that degree of change, from my experience, is rarely possible without getting that degree of feedback. So the feedback has anything but, been dealt with anything but fully, and in fact, the recommendations have been revised very substantially from the earlier version to reflect the types of issues that people expressed views about, whether that be positive or negative. So I would say that, is it money well spent? Perhaps for others to judge. I can certainly say from my own and the team's experience in dealing with people face to face, some of those sessions were challenging, but many of them were really rewarding. In sessions such as the Inquiry by Design workshop, the Intergenerational Forum, we witnessed people that would never, under any other circumstance, even talk to each other, let alone cooperate to produce a shared outcome. And that shared outcome was about the role that mass transit can play in seeing the type of future we'd like to experience here on the Sunshine Coast. And so when you look through the results of And so when you look through the results of exercises such as that, the type of processes that are regarded as deliberative rather than simply tick a box, you can see people who, when they had an opportunity to think about this more deeply, to give it greater detailed consideration, and to discuss with others, who are often of a completely opposing view. And, you know, they say great minds think alike, but those who have a difference of opinion can often produce a stronger result because they challenge each other. And so what we found in those processes was the deliberative processes actually revealed a strong sense of purpose in moving forward. And it wasn't a purpose to reject the future. It was a purpose, it was a common purpose, to embrace the future and see what can be done, to have us live in a more sustainable way and to see the type of, type of change that will preserve what we love about this place, but put us in position to prepare ourselves for the change that we know is coming. Those people didn't meet to be convinced of what I know as a planner, which is what I know as a planner is, I can't ignore this change, I'm legislatively compelled to plan for it, that's my role in this organisation. I know, because I oversaw the Preparation and Planning Act, I know what it compels us to do. So that's a very important role that council plays, it's part of our DNA. We do it and we do it well. But even if we decided not to, the state will be telling us to. So that's part of what we've done through this process, is embrace the community opinion in a very extensive way. As I said, it's up to others to judge whether what you read in that engagement report shows the depth of that process, reveals the extensive effort and energy put in by a large team of people. It wasn't just my team, it was a huge number of people across this organisation who gave up their weekends and et cetera to meet with people on the Sunshine Coast, to hear what they had to say.
Thank you. You've finished, councillor Dixon? Can I go to councillor Natoli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. James, don't take a seat, sorry. You mentioned the Gold Coast has undertaken a number of stages of its mass transit light rail. Where are they? Third stage, fourth stage?
My understanding is that stage three, which I think was previously called Stage Three A, is the early works have commenced.
Yep.
And that includes dealing with services, et cetera. And I think in the next, well, sometime in early 2022, we should see that project actually get underway. And that extends the light rail system from its current terminus at Broadbeach through to Burley.
Yep.
So there'll be a station at Burley Beach. So, and sorry, and then, and then stage four takes it from there all the way down to the airport, and that's in the planning phase at the moment and going through a business case process.
Yep. So how much the Gold, how much has the project overall cost?
The Gold Coast project?
Yeah. Overall?
It's a question I think I would have to take on notice on, to Arthur, you wouldn't know an answer?
Stage one, was it, was it 1.3 billion, stage one? And then?
Yeah, we'll take on notice. Yeah, we will have to take on notice there. Yeah, I think that sort of figure around the 1 to 1.2 billion dollar mark for stage one is a figure that sticks in my mind.
Every other stage been a similar sort of figure?
I think stage three, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, was, was less than that, so.
Okay.
I don't know the exact one.
And how did they fund it? Yeah, I heard councillor Dixon mention that it was done through their levy, but did they actually borrow money against the levy? Do we know how they came up with that sort of money?
I'm sorry, I can't answer the question, I don't, I don't know.
Because my understanding that it was 11% that Gold Coast City Council has contributed, and I would imagine that would have been the case for each of those three stages so far, that seems, I think you made a comment that as a proponent, there's an obligation or that we would have to be making some sort of contribution through this process, as that decision is not made yet. And of course, I understand that until the detailed business case, and we know how much that is, then we can only speculate. But we can use the Gold Coast, I would imagine, as a really good case of how it's been progressed in Queensland, and the state government, and the federal government and the local government have been able to put that together. So.
Can I, if you're asking questions?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand if that is the case in this case.
So you just need, you need to be conscious? Councillor, hold on a sec. Just be conscious that if you start talking to it, I'll do it as you're talking to the motion. So if there's questions, it's questions.
And I'm trying to clarify that question, so that we get clarity about that. I'm trying to understand why this was not really reflected through the community engagement process of what could be a possible outcome. You know, like what could happen in terms of the amount of money the council would have to come up with, how much that would impact every rate payer? And I'm wondering, maybe Amanda, you might like to answer this question. If that was known, would it have skewed the outcomes of the survey and the percentages that we had?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Can I say that it was not known, and it is not known, and will not be known, unless and until we have what's called an investment decision? And to go to your point that the Gold Coast City Council was an obligation, my understanding is they weren't. They weren't any obligation. They, I believe, felt there would be benefit in enticing other levels of government to make the large financial commitment in the council making an appropriate contribution. That's a decision that this council will be presumably asked to make. To ask the community to comment on something that is as yet so unknown, when it is very much a case of how long is a piece of string? In that we don't know which project will proceed to become the preferred project out of the detailed business case. It could be any one of those options, and it could be another one that emerges through the consideration of alternative technologies. So under the circumstances where we have no clear way of putting a very definitive question, I don't see how you could put a question at all. It's asking people to give an opinion about a subject where you are hinting that it might be something, but you can't say exactly what because you don't know what project? I struggle with how honest a process would be if it sought to do that.
With, so you just mentioned that all five options could very well be chosen through this process. So we can't give the community any guarantee that light rail may not end up being the preferred option? We can't give any guarantee that it won't be the option without overhead wires, tracks?
No.
No.
If I could, through you, Mr. Mayor, give a more fulsome answer to that question. We have, however, in the recommendations drawn, attention to the need for things like the effect of overhead wires to be studied more fully in the detailed business case, and for how those effects could be dealt with in certain sensitive locations. That's a very important matter. When we're not deaf to the concerns that people expressed about how overhead wires, for instance, can affect amenity. But equally, we're not blind to the implications of ruling out a light rail option, even with wires, if that is, as is the case, the most proven and the most energy efficient, and therefore the most sustainable option. So what we're not saying now is, in any given circumstance, the preference of amenity as the outcome should, in every circumstance, outperform or override our desire to be the most sustainable region. I don't believe that's a choice we would want to make at this point. What we're saying, however, is that where there are circumstances where we decide that amenity is the overriding consideration, we want to give ourselves that choice. I'm quite sure we would prefer to have the best of both, the most sustainable system with the highest degree of amenity. But there are times when those things are in tension, and we are giving ourselves the option to resolve that tension when we know the technology that will be preferred.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you gave the answer that you cannot guarantee that light rail won't be one of the five options chosen. Over the last, you talked about the population growth over the next 20 years, but let's take 20 years back, let's go back the last 20 years. Would you agree that the state government has failed our community in providing adequate road expansion of the state road network? And the miserable safety net public transport system has not been improved over those 20 years, has contributed to all the congestion that we have currently before us today?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the invitation to condemn the behaviour of our colleagues in the state government, I won't do that. What I will say, however, is our endeavour now is to make sure as we move forward, that we work with them to produce the best possible outcome. You know, they would acknowledge that they can do more. I've worked in the state government and I know there are 77 councils out there, all with hungry mouths to feed. And every council wants its fair share of the pie, the pie's simply not big enough, and they do their best to distribute that sensibly. Those councils that choose to work with them, to give them what they need to make their decision, has put themselves very much on the front foot. I was in Brisbane City Council when the decision was made to fund its busway network. The state then footed the bill for that. We've seen Gold Coast take the first step, and the state then footed the bill for the vast majority of that. We're reflecting the efforts of councils that decide not to leave their fate to a state agency that has its potential divided across an array of areas in this state. We are choosing to take our own fate in our own hands and present a powerful case to the state. As I said, I will not say what the state hasn't done till now. What I will say is that this is our best shot in getting them to do more and better into the future.
But you can't give any of the other councillors that are outside of this corridor any guarantee that the state government will be able to fund the public transport network, fix up the roads, that will, you know, take away the problems that we currently have with congestion?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
One final question. Would you agree, and this is something that I noticed at the Intergenerational Forum, and you mentioned that before, that a lot of those people that got involved through the community engagement were gravitating mostly towards a regional solution rather than this mass transit? Would you agree that a lot of the commentary was about that, that we need a much better system throughout the whole Sunshine Coast?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's acknowledged that that was an interest of a lot of the participants, and hence why we have a mass transit master plan for the whole of the Sunshine Coast. Perhaps what was disappointing to me is that despite our best efforts, and despite a presentation myself, where I described very clearly what that master plan was, many people in that forum chose to assume that the first stage of it was the entire master plan. And one can only question why they chose to do that, I can't say. But I did not leave them with any impression that we have other than a big, powerful plan for the future that looks at a public transport system serving the entire Sunshine Coast.
Thank you, James. I'm going to go to councillor Hungerford.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sound decisions are made when you have facts, data, and logic. That has to include quantitative and qualitative data. That's what we're looking at here. Detailed business case with the information you need to then argue the case for what is the best way forward. Now, would I be doing my job as a councillor and my responsibilities under the Local Government Act if I didn't have due diligence and good governance, ensuring I had that information to make a decision? No, I would not. Yet there are some saying that we should limit our options and only look at a few things. Does that make good decision making? No, it does not. Now, the debate we're having on what the option should be is to be had once we have the detailed business cases and that data to study, to put an intelligent, logical debate as to what's the correct way forward. That's what I'm looking for. And because council is an equal partner in funding the business case study and taking this forward, we'll have a very strong voice at that table in determining the outcome, to be there to put our case forward for our community, which is what we've done, by getting the public data in, to understand where our communities coming from. Now, at the moment, I have a personal preference, everyone does. On the surface, I prefer rapid bus system, that's what looks good to me. My least preferred is the light rail. But what do I have to back that up? To say that what I feel is the right thing is the right thing? I have no data, I have no facts. It's an emotional, personal opinion, and that's all most people have at the moment. And you need to make decisions on the facts, not opinions, emotions, and fear. Because that doesn't make a good, sound decision-making process. Now, the things I see that this is a done deal and result in wall-to-wall high-rise. I started out at 15 years of age handing out how to vote cards, and it was an anti-high-rise how to vote card. And I can tell you, my attitude hasn't changed since I was 15, I'm 57 now. And I've campaigned on not becoming another Gold Coast. That is murmuration, that's the reason why I'm here. And some saying that, you know, we put this in, it will result in a particular option. How can you say that with clarity without the information? Now, what disappoints me is campaigns that are built on fear and emotion mislead and deceive, and do not result in sound decision-making, good decision-making. I think we can all remember the most famous one that was in a previous federal election, the Mediscare campaign. Fear campaigns have a purpose, political purpose, to achieve something at a certain point in time. But do they make for good decision-making and long-term decision-making? No, they do not. Now, we're going into a new town plan. I don't know if anyone here supports increasing the heights of buildings and densities. In fact, if you study it, the South East Queensland Regional Plan has us reaching over 500,000 people by 2041. That's another 200,000 people on what we have today. That has already been pointed out, is already factored into our Sunshine Coast Plan 2014. Because under the state guidelines, we have to reflect the Planning Act 2016 and the provisions of the South East Queensland Regional Plan, and we must show how we're going to reach those goals, those targets. They are already factored in our planning. So to say this is going to result in a massive increase, unless the state government revises its regional plan and pushes the figures up again and directs us that we have to, isn't there. It's a false campaign. It's a false fear. And I wouldn't support it anyway, fight it tooth and nail.
Happy extension. Thank you, councillor Dixon, someone with a second, councillor Johnston, all those in favour of an extension? Let's carry, carry on, councillor.
I've finished. But I can remember when we started this in 2013, I think it's when we first started looking at this?
11.
2011? I am losing track of time, I don't. It's been a long journey, but when we started out, there were very few things to look at. What I like is the fact we've got many more options and technologies coming through to be considered as part of this, then we had one or two. Now we've got five to put forward and look at, and I'm pretty excited about that. And as time goes on, and what, technologies come through, even when we're on this journey into the future, because this is going to take several decades, and I probably might be here at the end of it, that can be amended and adjusted as we go along. But we have to start somewhere. And this is looking at the first stage of what we need to do to roll out a comprehensive transport system across this region. Because even those that are pushing the Camp cost is the total answer. Part of the answer, I believe, we need both. But if you only have that, the people still gotta drive from their home to that railway line, they're gonna need multiple story car parks to handle the cars for people who are going to use it. This is about having that and a public transport system that can interconnect and will expand over time to more areas, so people can get, leave their home, not in the car, but have viable ways of getting to where they need to get to. It's not going to be easy, it's going to It's not going to be easy, it's going to take time. Not going to happen overnight, but we're starting that journey and that's what this is about. But we are not turning our back on the community. We've listened to what they've said here and I personally agree with a lot of the points put forward. But we need to do that in an intelligent, quantitative way of putting that argument forward in our advocacy, because we do need to get the state and federal governments on board. Because they're going to fund, like the Gold Coast, what, ninety percent was funded by external, rather than the council, that's what we're looking at here. But we will be a very strong advocate for our community. And I'm saying what we're doing here is not turning our back on the community at all. And I'm definitely not, I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hungerford. Councillor Johnston?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I've just got a couple of questions. Thank you, I'm not sure who to direct them to. First one is in relation to proposals that were in discussion so far in relation to the town plan review. Perhaps Warren or someone, or the CEO might be able to answer this. Is it a fact, as councillor Hungerford said, that there is existing sufficient zoned land to accommodate the population cap, or the population anticipated in 2041 of five hundred thousand?
Can you add to that, Warren, please?
So, the current planning scheme was prepared about 2011. It was planning for about 2036 at that time and with some extra in relation to it, adopted in 2014, et cetera. It allocated generally up to around about five hundred thousand people in that capacity that was there. Since that time, we've actually had a look very closely. And there's been a number of amendments which have provided some additional potential. And obviously Biwo East is now a part of the regional plan. I think the question really is that the majority of the growth expected is accounted for in the current planning scheme. But as our population has been growing at a faster rate, there may be a need to relook at that as part of the regional plan and also our planning scheme review.
Thank you, Mr. Bunker. The next question is a finance or discussion about who will pay. Assuming possibility that this project went ahead and it was going to cost 1.5 billion and the council was talked into contributing ten percent of that. Obviously, it'd probably have to be serviced by a transport levy of some sort. It'd have to be financed some way or other and most likely through a transport levy. Would that transport levy to fund it likely to be spread across the entire local authority? Or would it be graduated to different areas? So in other words, if the main benefit was along the coastal strip, would there be a higher levy there, get back into areas like the railway towns where there's rapid transit buses, lower levy? And for the areas west of the railway line where there's really no benefit whatsoever, would they have to pay as well? Because that's one of the questions that I'm getting constantly from people in my area.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a highly hypothetical question. And I would imagine when, after detailed business cases and after people understand far more about what it actually might be in terms of our future transport, it would be a decision, a future decision of the council of the day to understand all of those things, to commit council to any form of investment and also to commit how that form of investment would be paid for. It's not a decision for us to make here today.
Thank you, Madam CEO. That's the answer I expected and that's what I've been telling people. I'll speak later, thank you.
Councillor Suarez?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just also had a couple of questions and I thank my colleagues for their questions so far. Councillor Dixon, you scared me a little bit. You literally spoke about every question that I had written down, almost word-perfect, so I'm worrying if you were copying. I actually do have another question about the land use planning. James, you mentioned that the transit corridor planned in the 2014 planning scheme already accommodated for consolidation and growth in that corridor. And we have the new planning scheme coming forward. How does the detailed business case fit into that? So the process should be, maybe you could just talk me through the process?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the question. The detailed business case and the planning scheme process are, in effect, separate because one proceeds under a business case development framework set down by the state and the other one is proceeding in accordance with the provisions of the Planning Act 2016. However, neither can be, ignore the presence or the influence of the other. Because at the end of the day, our entire existence is played out in two places, well, two ways, places and the connections between them. So land use transport integration is one of the key endeavours of good planning, whether that occurs through a detailed business case process or through the planning scheme. So the detailed business case, and we've seen it play out in the options analysis as well, the options analysis, like any business case process, is asking what patronage or what outcome will be served by the provision of this infrastructure? So if you're doing a road, for instance, how many vehicles will use that road? Which starts with an understanding about where the vehicles are coming from and where they might be heading to, so origin and destination. A public transport project really starts with, well, how many people will you serve by providing that service? And so it looks at how many people are in the area that will be served by that now. When you look forward, as much as we know through the information provided by the Queensland Government Statistician, how many people are projected to go there? And the Queensland Government Statistician projects forward around twenty years. And so we get a sense of that. And then it also asks the question, as you'd expect it to, is that if you introduce that service, what will that service do to attract others who aren't currently there to actually go there? So what is its capacity to continue to enhance the serviceability of that area and the level of patronage? So the detailed business case has to ask those questions to arrive an answer about the benefits and the costs and what that will turn out to represent in terms of the value for money of that project. That is insightful and it can't proceed in isolation of an understanding about how that would interact and intersect with the interests of the planning scheme. So hence, during our community engagement process, we could have simply ignored any aspects of land use planning, but we chose not to because they are, as I said, interrelated. So hence, the questions that we included in our survey and the information we released around that. And the survey, if you recall, talked about the Queensland Government Statistician's office projection of another twenty-five thousand dwellings in that urban corridor and then what would be the best ways of accommodating that going forward. And the reason we're looking at that is that it'd be, well, perhaps they have to think of 2041 as an end date for anything, that life will go on. But it is saying what is the sort of capacity that will grow over time in response to something like the service that you provide. So it said, it asked the question, would you like to see that growth accommodated by consolidating it in a slightly denser form around your mass transit stations, whatever form that mass transit might take, and centres and nodes being more intense and then producing the opportunity for other things like cafes, lifestyle precincts, et cetera? Or would you like to see it spread more evenly along the corridor? Or would you like to see it dispersed broadly throughout the corridor? And it included a graph, or a little pie chart, that showed what proportion of all properties will be affected by doing that, so that was clear about the extent of change. And obviously, the tighter and more dense, and we're talking four to six stories predominantly around that first option, has a very small proportion, as it happened, it's about seven percent. Or properties could ultimately be affected by that in the longer term. So that information, and just so you're aware, that roughly, I think it was, let's say, seventy-three percent, so that's not roughly, but say, that's roughly three-quarters of people elected that they were happy with one of those three options as a means of accommodating that extra number of dwellings. So we haven't shied away from that. But what does a detailed business case do with that? Really not very much. The analysis of how patronage can be supported and by what happens in terms of change continues. But the feedback received during that process is a valuable consideration in the engagement process for the planning scheme. And I would dare say that there would be some referencing back in the planning scheme engagement process to the outcomes of the engagement we've undertaken as part of the options analysis.
So just so that I've got it clear in my mind, because that was quite a long answer.
I'm sorry, I apologise.
It's all right. So any future population growth in that corridor will be driven by the planning scheme and the input from the community and the industry and not driven by any results that will come out of a detailed business case?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. No change of a planning nature can be made other than under the auspices of the Planning Act. The Planning Act sets down a clear process. It's a process that is set down in ministers' guidelines and rules and sets down how that change is to be promulgated, how it's to be subject to community consultation and how it's then to be incorporated in the scheme. So the detailed business case is informative and certainly of more than passing interest to that process, but is not interrelated and does not affect that process in any way.
Thank you. I do have another question as well. Just got to skip over the ones that councillor Dixon has already asked. You mentioned in the original slides that the purpose of undertaking this project was to advance towards a better public transport system for the whole of the coast. And councillor Babrowski pointed out a couple of communities in my division who were supportive of putting all options forward. I can tell you, I worked pretty hard with my community to get them to participate because what I'm hearing clearly from them is they want better public transport or any public transport. So my question is, should this go through? We're looking at a detailed business case and the focus will be on the mass transit corridor. What are we going to be doing in the interim for the communities that are outside of the mass transit corridor?
And thank you very much and through you, Mr. Mayor. I might refer you to the recommendations of the report. I'll just come through and find them. But that was one of the things that really came to the fore in our conversation with those communities. I can recall conversations with people up at Koolum there and interested in what we were doing. And the level of interest that was coming from the community around that has resulted in a recommendation to effectively not await moving forward with a detailed business case or at least at the same time, seek to advocate for the provision of better services of the kind that you're talking about. So I'm trying to find the specific recommendation.
I think it's number thirteen.
Thirteen, yes. That TransLink Division, which is the area of the State Government responsible, be engaged during the detailed business case stage to ensure that the broader Sunshine Coast region gains maximum benefits from improved public transport services and to progress the supporting bus network. And so this goes to one of the points the community made, which is, and I had many conversations with people who said, nobody uses buses now, but in many instances, their answer to the problem was more buses. And I can understand their desire to have better bus services. And when you read our, and look at our master plan, you realise that it has that multi-layered spider's web type approach. So this looks to advocate for the stage rollout of the high-frequency bus network identified in the options analysis, supported by priority bus infrastructure and suitable park-and-ride facilities. And you might recall, in the draft options analysis, we examined a much broader suite of options than the ones that were recommended to go forward. And that included bus enhancements of various kinds, sometimes infrastructure, sometimes services. They weren't carried forward, not because they're not a good idea, but in and of themselves, they don't give you that significant degree in improved services that is necessary. But they are incredibly valuable complement and support to the type of mass transit service that we're looking to introduce here. So that's one of the reasons why, and that recommendation goes on, to talk about ongoing improvement to local feeder bus networks, including bus route frequency and improved service patterns and the provision of bus priority and park-and-ride facilities enabling residents from all parts of the Sunshine Coast to access the public transport system. Note the community's desire for park-and-ride facilities on a number of locations such as Kool. Now, that recommendation as part of this report is only able to have the power that it does if this report proceeds and if we advocate in the way we say in this that we will. But it is there as a clear recommendation.
Thank you for that. I did read the recommendations and the reason for my question is, I took that recommendation as to being improved bus networks to connect to the mass transit corridor. So until we have a mass transit corridor, those divisions that are outside of it would not be getting those increased bus services. So hence my word interim. What are we doing, you know, from today? Because if this, whatever it may be, is not going to be constructed till 2027, that's still another six years. And we talk about traffic congestion. I can tell you, councillor Law pointed out that I'm on the radio most mornings, the traffic congestion in Purdian and Koolum is out of control. So is that recommendation thirteen to progress those advanced bus networks and increased services from whenever the State Government gets it and we start talking about it? Or is it after the mass transit has been built?
No, it's intended, through you, Miss Mayor, it's intended to be an immediate effort on council's behalf. There's a good reason for that, is that despite people saying nobody uses buses now, people do. In fact, the six-hundred service is actually quite well patronised. And that, if you look at good public transport systems, they don't just emerge and suddenly appear overnight. They're usually built on services that are operating reasonably effectively now. So the six-hundred bus service, for instance, operates at fifteen-minute frequency and has reasonably good patronage. It's not spectacular, but it is the sort of starting point that you can already connect into. And it has the capacity with better connections to operate even more effectively and efficiently and would reinforce the benefit that you have out of running a service like that connecting the key centres along the urban corridor.
I have another question, Mr. Mayor. We talked about our involvement in the detailed business case and putting in the seven-and-a-half million dollars gives us an equal share with the State Government, but they ultimately make the decision. What would our involvement look like? You know, how many people from council, how much input from council? What's the process? How can we be guaranteed that we will be able to have that heavy weight in terms of influence in what's going forward?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The process we're seeking to embark on would commence with the preparation of a memorandum of understanding between council and the State Government, principally the Department of Transport and Main Roads. That memorandum of understanding would set out the roles and responsibilities and the functions to be formed by both parties. The reality is that the Department of Transport and Main Roads has to lead this. They are the agency, the State Government agency for delivering on public transport. We can't change that. However, our seat at that table through the arrangements established under a memorandum of understanding would give us the opportunity to perform that role effectively. Looking at other examples that I've been part of and been part of MOUs between state and local, well, state and Commonwealth and state and local, and most recently my time in the state between the state and Gold Coast City Council on a particular project, they are very effective at ensuring both parties do have appropriate input. As to the team that will be set up, it would be my desire that it would be a joint team and co-loc. and co-located so that it operates as one consolidated cooperative unit in a fully integrated way. We won't know whether that's possible until we've effectively handed this over to the Department of Transport and Main Roads and they start turning their mind to that. But it would be my intention that that cooperative arrangement would be established from day one. There's no question in my mind that this is our turf. Nobody understands this place better than we do. And DTMR would not just welcome the opportunity to take advantage of our detailed understanding of the local situation, but would almost absolutely rely on that to ensure that the information they have is accurate and contemporary and informed by our understanding of what's going on.
So just part B to that question, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the structure, we've heard from a number of councillors, there are some that will be highly impacted because the route goes through their divisions. There are other divisions that will be less impacted because it doesn't go through there at all, but they still have the needs. So what sort of involvement will we have as councillors in the decision-making going forward if the business case should proceed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In most memorandum of understanding that I've been involved in establishing, there is a clear description of how that interacts with the decision-making processes in each level of government. We would be really our own masters in that. So whatever mechanism the council felt was the appropriate way of ensuring all of you who wanted to have a say in this could have that say and do so effectively is really down to the arrangement that the council wants to establish. To this point, we've had a project control group, which has a select number of councillors as part of that. I doubt, in no doubt, that that arrangement would be continued and perhaps recast to involve a broader range of councillor interests to have their effect through that mechanism.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might reserve the right to speak should I after the other questions.
Thank you, councillor Suarez. Councillor Law, please.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Some questions, if I may, please. Just following on from some of the comments already made around recommendation thirteen, that is about a recommendation of this is what should happen, that we should have a far greater improvements to our broad network of public transport. But if I can go down to recommendation fourteen D, we've got a comment there around continue to advocate for. Now, the first part of that says about can cost, I think we've done can cost, I don't want to go there. But the second part of that, improvement in feeder bus networks, including bus route frequency and improved service patterns. Now, we've got the word continue there, and at the beginning of it, it's about following support actions. How's that going at the moment?
So I can only, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, I can only attest to my involvement in that process in that that's broadly led through the transport infrastructure planning area in that part of council. And I've been involved in a number of discussions with TransLink and Transport and Main Roads on that. And so, and we have a quarterly, we have a quarterly session, I think, between all the senior officers in council and the senior officers in DTMR around all our overlapping and interrelated interests. And so those mechanisms are used for us to perpetually promote our intended outcomes. And so that's a formal mechanism. The state is represented at high levels across their planning and TransLink operational areas, et cetera. And so any issues or concerns we have are drawn to their attention. Those meetings are minuted, et cetera. So, and then we have a series of informal information sessions as well. So we use those to draw DTMR and TransLink's attention to the need for these services.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just add to Mr. Coates' answer on this. Some months ago, I wrote to the Director General of Transport and Main Roads highlighting the significant appetite our residents of the coast have for improved public transport systems. As a result of that correspondence, the acting head of TransLink, Sally Stannard, came to visit me last month. And I had a meeting with her and our head of transport planning, Nick Cooney, to talk about how we could progress actions, tangible actions on the ground for us here in Sunshine Coast. Whilst we don't have those on the table today, there was a significant commitment to bring our teams together and try and understand what we can show as our next steps for public transport here. So we are not waiting for anything to happen for the longer term and the big projects that we need, but recognizing that we have a number of public transport needs across the whole of the Sunshine Coast region.
Thank you. And certainly, we have, I believe, a huge number of immediate needs to improve our public transport if we are going to have any luck in getting people out of cars and into buses, into any type of public transport or active transport. Let me focus on a question, though. If we go forward with this, we've committed seven point five million, the state will match that. That will then become the fifth report in a journey over ten years. And so far, all we have is, with the greatest respect, paper. We don't actually have anything tangible to improve our transport networks across the Sunshine Coast. So could you give a very quick, high-level comment on what do we get for fifteen million?
We get, as has been said, a detailed business case, and no project of this kind will proceed to a procurement decision without that step. It's set down in the Queensland Government's Business Case Development Framework and is a necessary final step. It is also a necessary step in the Infrastructure Australia Business Case Development Framework. So you're right, it is more paper, but it's essential paper. It's paper without which we do not get ourselves in a position and nor does the state of understanding that they have a project to deliver.
So it just strikes me as a hefty price tag for another report when we've already got so much information. However, I've lost my train of thought, sorry. I'll just rest there.
Thank you, councillor Natoli.
After that last slide that you had, can we bring that back up, please? So.
One before, I think. Or is it done?
It's the one where it talked about some of the steps that are required that talked about the planning scheme, parking. Oh, the last top point, please. Have we, it's one of the slides, yeah, that's it. So council, can we have that? Council should support actions to progress the planning scheme. I'm just trying to understand what that means, because we are always progressing the planning scheme. I'm just not, I'm just not aware how this ties in with the mass transit.
Do you want to break? Through you, Mr. Mayor. Look, that action, the way the recommendations are laid out in the report, that action really is about council's role as well moving forward, what else council could do, and it lists a number of actions there. And one, of course, is progressing the planning scheme, the place-making, parking management and active transport conditions. Because when the state government's progressing the detailed business case, that they are areas that they will look to council for support and direction on.
No, sorry, if I might compliment that answer. I think your question might have been in part around have we not indeed taken the action to progress the planning scheme? We've taken the action to resolve, to undertake the preparation of the planning scheme. But under the Planning Act, there are a multitude of actions that flow from that. So just beginning, just deciding to start the race doesn't mean you've run it and finished it. You have to go through all the various steps set down in the ministers' guidelines and rules for the preparation of a scheme, the notification of scheme, the consideration of submissions, the referable to the state for state interests and the advice to the minister about how submissions have been dealt with. So that is a reference to a sequence of actions that would occur in relation to almost all of those things. None of those things occur just like, we're going to do place making or things like that.
But there'd be an expectation that if we go down this path of the detailed business case, that that would actually be part of the process that we'd need to advance the planning scheme based on, you know, the two thousand and seventeen regional plan and the infill targets that we have to meet. Is that correct?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. It's really just a consolidation of the recommendation, which talks about preparing the planning scheme, but having that informed by the feedback that was actually gathered through the mass transit engagement. So that wrap-up for that particular dot point relates to recommendation fourteen, which specifies that we'll pass on the information that we've gathered through the engagement to help inform the preparation of the planning scheme.
I need further clarification, because councillor Hungerford raised this issue about pretty much the two thousand and fourteen plan caters to most of the growth that we're going to, the two hundred odd thousand people. Warren, you talked about the fact that that planning scheme is.
Just ask the question.
So the question I want to know is, is this part here that bothers me? That I don't think the significance of this is really understood. I understand that the planning scheme has a certain amount of capacity that's already built in. But it's the changes that happened in two thousand and seventeen that changes the whole focus of that along the coastal corridor. And that's the part that doesn't get picked up with the comment.
So what is the question you want Warren to answer?
Explain what our obligations are under the regional plan in terms of meeting our obligations in terms of infill targets within the coastal corridor.
As change raised before, two separate processes. This is a project, we're doing our options analysis in relation to it, working through a project. We also have an obligation as a council to continue to do our plan in accordance with the state planning requirements, the Planning Act, et cetera. The planning scheme is always changing as we start doing amendments, and over a period of time, we do a major review. And that's where we just put our hand up and said, we'll start that process. When we start that process, all consultation that's done on any project is actually part of that feed into that early works for that planning scheme. So what this is saying is all that feedback that we've received, some of it was directly about the project, some was about a range of things in the Sunshine Coast region, needs to be passed over and ensured that the placekeeping team don't start from scratch. They have all that available information as their base as they move forward. That's what that provision is actually talking about. Conversely, we take a lot of that input, particularly some of that really important input through this process, this feedback, which talked about what people wanted at the place level. And we'll take that across to our place team in our design for other areas to make sure that that information and that guideline is passed across. We also received quite a few comments in relation to the options paper, which dealt with parking and improved active transport. And again, the desire to actually ensure that that feedback is passed across and used by other parts of council, because it's very valuable and very rich feedback for the council to learn during this process.
You're done, councillor Natoli?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I want to be able to speak against this motion. And I want to follow up on that point. Councillors, it's very clear.
So you are now speaking to the motion?
I'm going to speak to this motion. It's very clear that it says in the report here, at least an additional fifty-three thousand seven hundred consolidation dwellings are required within the region by twenty forty-one to achieve the shaping SEQ consolidation benchmarks of sixty-two percent. This equates to approximately two thousand two hundred and forty additional dwellings in the existing urban areas each year from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and forty-one. Based on the current trends, it is estimated only about forty percent of the required fifty-three thousand seven hundred dwellings will be taken up without intervention to provide infrastructure and review the land use planning arrangements for the Sunshine Coast urban corridor to encourage and support further urban consolidation. So in terms of that, there is a fear campaign based on this mythical thing that we are not going to densify this coast, that, you know, everything in our current planning scheme in two thousand and fourteen is not true, because it all changed in two thousand and seventeen. The council and the state government hatched up this plan, and it decided that flip everything over and a consolidation increase from forty percent to sixty-two percent. I even read a document the other day, it's up to sixty-three percent. And so there is this unknown until we go through the planning scheme. People don't really know what that means, because the community's never been asked. We've never ever, ever approached the community and said, this is what our plan is. Do you actually approve this? You know, those people that live in that area and their investments, they've never been asked. You know, the regional plan, you know, people are discovering this now. And that fear is real. You know, if it is a fear campaign, it's real because this document tells us exactly what the future lies for them. And so my concern is that councillor, to be able to accommodate that future growth, this whole process of mass transit is all about urban consolidation. It's all about where we put our people, and we can't do that without a mass transit. And I've not heard anyone in our community that doesn't want better public transport, doesn't want to fix the congestions on our roads. I have not heard anyone in our community that says that. And I think, but the fear is that we are going to destroy the ambience along the beach by putting tracks and overhead wires and basically create a mass transit that has the capacity, like the Gold Coast, to where the sky is the limit. Because once you've got that, the comments about how economical and how it weighs up is that that infrastructure for the next fifty years is that. How long is a piece of string? And that is the fear about light rail. It's about the fear about what will happen with that. It's not about them not wanting to improve public transport or reduce the congestion. But we've been failed as a community by the state government. Over the last twenty years, I've seen significant growth here on the coast, and they've not put any money apart, recently the Nambur Connection Road, a little bit around Kewana Way with around the roundabouts and the four-lane around the hospital. That's it. The congestion is rife all over the Sunshine Coast, and we need to find solutions. But if we go down this mass transit project here, you know, we will have to make a contribution if we want them to be encouraged to go ahead. Based on what I can see here, nearly one point six billion, and everything I've heard from Mr. Coates is that it will be light rail. You know, the previous strategic business plan, it's been put forward that it was a preferred model. If we're going to be advocating to the state government, the report, ten out of ten, light rail, ten out of ten. You know, it comes to the top of, as Cream does, comes to the top of the equation all the time. And I can see Mr. Coates nodding. It is true, there's no doubt. If we went down this path, that's what will happen. But have we asked our First Nations people if their country, that they want light rail, tracks, overhead wires, on table, two letters? The correspondents from two different parts, Gabi Gavi and the Karbik Karbik people, do not want light rail on their land.
Can I arrange for an extension, councillor? Councillor Dixon, someone to second please. Councillor Suarez, those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, carry on, councillor.
Mr. Mayor, councillors, we often talk about it there. And if we make a decision and send the five options to the state government and light rail gets up, we're up for possibly a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy million dollars based on the Gold Coast model. Their population base is much bigger than ours. So their rates for their transport levy is nearly a hundred dollars more than ours. And I don't know what that will do in terms of our rates, but at least let's say it's the same as the Gold Coast, another hundred dollars. And that is paid by every rate payer on the Gold Coast, not by a benefit even for those that actually benefit. And every business pays a percentage, so businesses actually pay a lot more. And yet, only those that are within the Gold Coast light rail corridor benefit from that. The other issue that we have is that we are reliant on the state government's goodwill that they're actually going to give us funding. that they're actually going to give us funding to do all of the other good public transport stuff that we need. I want to see better public transport in Nambur. I want to see, be able to better connection from Nambur to Marichidora, from Coolum to Marichidora, from the university to Marichidora. And the 600 that Mr. Coates talked about is the only bus that runs every 15 minutes. All the others fail us miserably. They call it a safety net. And we've had a safety net for how many decades? And we've not had the improved money spent in this area for the roads and we are choking in congestion and the mass transit will not fix that. So Mr. Mayor, I want to move an amendment to the current motion and I'm happy to read the meeting. You've got a copy of that?
Councillor... Just to be clear councillor, you have now spoken to the motion. You called it an amendment. What you've provided to us, in my view, is not an amendment. I'm happy for me to give your opinion on that. It would be an alternative motion. But as we're already dealing with the motion, we need to deal with it until it's completed. If you wish to present that thereafter, I would be seeking some advice on a couple of the items in terms of the sort of legal issues that might exist with some of those. But for the moment, we're going to stick with the motion we're dealing with. I assume you've now finished your...
Well, if that's the case, I will finish on this basis that I do, and every councillor seen the alternative motion. And you have an option here. You either send, send the five options. And as you've heard, you cannot guarantee that light rail won't be one of those preferred options. You can't, can't be guaranteed that it won't be. And if we go down that pathway, and as I've heard, and I know a lot of councillors are opposed to light rail, what happens then? Even if we do have some interaction, what happens at that very point if light rail is a preferred option and the councillors don't support it? Have we wasted all that time and effort when we, we want to progress some of the other options like the rapid bus? We want to progress the trackless trams. We want to progress the quality bus corridor. But the community has spoken loudly that they do not want light rail. It's very clear that we have seen through the process and especially the survey that we have, that the community have not supported light rail. Only 13% supported light rail with overhead wires and tracks and 18% supported wireless light rail. And when you think about the survey that was undertaken, 3,890 people are committed to that, that's a very big sample. A very big sample of people that we can extrapolate right across because most surveys that are undertaken, and they can do this in elections in America, for 300 odd million people, that 1,000 person surveys substantially be able to give you a plus or minus percentage point in terms of accuracy by 3%.
Okay.
So I'm saying to you councillors, the community have spoken loudly that they do not support light rail. The survey backs that up. And I'm saying to you, do not support this. I'm prepared to put up an alternative motion and I would hope that you would support that.
Councillor, thank you. I'm going to go to councillor Landsberg.
Thank you. Through the chair. I had a couple of questions for the officer, but I will just like to probably ask a question for Warren on a comment that councillor Natoli made about council hatching a plan between the state government and council to change the infill from 2017. Would you like to comment on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When the SEQ regional plan process was done, that was a state-driven process. Council and the community through a whole range of mechanisms had a lot of input in relation to that process over an extended period of time. And so council was definitely providing input throughout that entire process of different drafts, various components. It is in fact a state government plan when it's signed. But it is a plan that actually is, we need to actually work with and work through and ensure that we're meeting those requirements.
So in relation to, sorry, before this options analysis has been finalised, we've made that decision back in 2017. And regardless if this study hadn't been carried out, we wouldn't have changed the direction up to date?
So as mentioned, an options strategy planning scheme. In the planning scheme side, yes, we will need to ensure that any planning scheme or amendment or any new planning scheme is reflective of the latest state government direction in relation to the regional plan.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to make a note through the chair that comments undermining our study has been out in the social media. And I'll just make that quick comment before I mention that. But yeah, I do take offence to the comments of obviously council colluding with state government to change our infill population growth or our infill dwellings requirement. In section 8.1 in our community engagement, I'd just like to read a paragraph for the purposes of assessing strategic priorities in the options analysis and following previous and current direction from TMR. The Kamcos corridor is considered for regional rail purpose only and is not suitable for a local access function. Now, probably a question for whether the officers, but do you feel if you were to do this options analysis again, did we really, because this was feedback that I received from community engagement down this end of the coast, which I attended every one of them in division two and a couple in division three, was explaining the difference between those two rail corridors and the benefits from one to another? And I think that was an area that I think we could have done better.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When we became aware of a view that Kamcos was considered to have the capacity to perform a genuine local mass transit service, we commissioned a study which is included in the draft options analysis. It examines the capacity for the provision of regional rail in the Kamcos corridor to serve a local mass transit function. And hence the figures in one of those slides are put up where roughly 12,000 people would have walk-up catchment access to regional rail on Kamcos versus 66,000 in the local mass transit corridor. It's not a matter that we chose for a range of reasons to strongly promote because it is a, if you like, defensive response to an accusation that Kamcos or regional own Kamcos could do that. And while I appreciate the complementary views about the effectiveness of the survey in obtaining people's opinions, I've also commented that it's a, it's a, it's a big and complicated survey. And so throw, load in extra questions that saw people's level of understanding about the capacity of this compared to that would have really not been of great benefit in that what we were principally interested in was were people, first of all, understanding what these, the benefits and impacts of these options would be and then expressing a view about whether they were prepared to see them go forward for further study, knowing that that did provide a good quality local mass transit system. We made no bones about the fact that regional own Kamcos is an essential part of the long-term master plan. It's been a corridor reserved for more than two decades. If it was there now, and if the Commonwealth says tomorrow we're going to fund it, we'll be doing handstands, for sure. And we're not about to say that, oh, well, sorry, we don't want that because we want a local mass transit system. Those two ultimately will provide you an effective interconnected public transport network, providing two separate but complementary functions. So the two together ultimately will provide the skeleton of the mass transit system for the whole of the Sunshine Coast and perhaps arteries might be a better way, and the veins being the high quality, high frequency bus connections. So we do end up with a body that pumps strongly around public transport services.
You finished, Harry?
I have another question. Sorry, I have one more question. Thank you. And it was probably councillor Maria obviously pretty much answered the question or asked around the, about the memorandum of understanding with Gold Coast during that process for their detailed business case. I think there's many lessons to be learnt regardless of what mode of transport is decided during the options analysis. But some, a lot of the feedback that we have received on obviously inspecting that site down there is a lack of embellishments and the visual amenity, the planting that was really left out during that whole process. So I'm sure that as Sunshine Coast council, we were really strong on, we're different and it's an opportunity that we can look at mistakes maybe that have been made previously around many, many other areas in the country. And I think we've got an opportunity to deliver a project in Sunshine Coast in its totality. Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. It's your comment about looking to the learnings from the Gold Coast. We have had conversations already with the team in Gold Coast City Council that were participated in the, in the business case preparation and then the implementation of the project. So we already have started to compile a list of the learnings. And one of them is that there was, there were circumstances there where things, as you described embellishments, didn't see their way on the ground. And we've got a clear understanding from the people we've spoken to about how to overcome that issue and how to make that front and centre in council's consideration. And take it from myself and the team, none of us would like to see ourselves associated with a project that fell short in terms of the quality urban environment we want to create as part of this. And we will remain heavily invested on your behalf to ensure that occurs.
James, based on some of the commentary you've made, I intend to speak to the motion. No, I understand. But as the chair, I have the prerogative of doing that and I'm going to do it now. And I want to just start by saying that, you know, today's part of the journey that started, as I said before, in 2011 with the Abbott council. You'll recall in 2011, that was three years after amalgamation. We've been carrying on with that work and dealing with the improvements along the way, looking at alternative technology opportunities and continue to do that. And of course, we had two councillors, councillor Dixon and councillor Hungerford, who were part of that first amalgamated council. Prior to the amalgamation in 2008, there wasn't a whole lot of collaboration between Calandra City Council and Marichi Dorshia Council around public transport. That's a legacy we've got to deal with today. Because council perhaps didn't fight hard enough at that time to ensure the state government paid attention to what our transportation needs were. And we're only part of the way along that journey with considerable more work needing to be done before any decision about what is the most appropriate public transport solution for our Sunshine Coast, let alone before any decision is made by other tiers of government on what they will fund. And as has been said by other speakers, we haven't always been first at the door when it comes to handing out the money for state and federal governments. But never let it be forgotten that we're here today because of the failure of federal and state governments to discharge their responsibilities around public transport on the Sunshine Coast. And isn't it great that council's prepared to stand up for our constituents to make sure that we pay attention and we can get a solution? And I may remind everyone that despite all of the clamouring by LNP state members and federal members in this region, and indeed some of our own colleagues in this room, that the rail on the Kamcos corridor should be our only public transport solution. There's no plan for that project. There's no publicly released options analysis. There's no public consultation on the options for the Kamcos alignment. Most importantly, there's no funding solution. In fact, there's never been any funding, despite it being proposed over 20 years ago. There wasn't funding when the LNP was in government and there isn't funding for Kamcos now when the Labor Party is in government. Councillors, I'd like to make the point however, that we have always said there's no competition between the Kamcos corridor for regional connectivity between the city of Marichi Dorshia and the city of Brisbane and the mass transit, which is a complementary and necessary addition in an integrated public transport system. As has been said, our region is the second fastest growing region in Queensland, heading towards being home to more than 500,000 people. We need both the Kamcos corridor and the mass transit solution, whatever that might be from the options analysis. And you've already heard today by a couple of speakers that we have the highest per head of population motor car ownership in the country, second highest, I'm sorry, behind Perth. Why is that? No public transport. Or at least a poor public transport system in the eyes of many, simply to get in your car and just drive, despite all that congestion that exists. And how much more congestion will there be with another 200,000 people added over the next 20 years? And I don't accept sermons by the federal and state members that the Sunshine Coast can only have one. Why would we settle for that? That's not how they apply the rules elsewhere. If we in this council accept a vastly lower standard for a public transport system for this region than exists elsewhere, than like the federal and state members and perhaps some of you in this room, we're selling our residents short. As I said at the outset, we still, we still have a long way to go on this journey. What we are doing, considering today is an options analysis. Let me say that again, an options analysis. So there's no misunderstanding. We're not deciding on what type of mass transit solution should be delivered to the Sunshine Coast. We're not deciding the final route for whatever is eventually delivered. We're not rejecting Kamcos. As I said earlier, there's no competition. And we're not proposing any amendments to the planning scheme. What we are doing is receiving the results of the analysis of the five options considered. Receiving the results of the extensive community engagement process for which our officers are to be commended for conducting. And if you haven't noticed, the media's been running a variety of polls and surveys as well. Channel 7 overnight surveyed 1,000 people, 52% prefer light rail. The Sunshine Coast Daily polled about 750, according to you, Joe, statistically significant. The light rail rates in the top two. So it's interesting what 350,000 people think, isn't it? And how you can take a little slice from here and a little slice from there, a little slice from there and still get it horribly wrong. So we're receiving the results of the analysis of the five options considered. We're receiving the results of the extensive community process. And most importantly, if we endorse the options analysis, we're saying to the 68% of people who told us it was important to have a good mass transit system on the Sunshine Coast that we've got their back. We'll be ensuring that the five options currently on the table are explored further. We'll be holding the state government commitment to jointly fund the detailed business case for stage one of the mass transit solution, a commitment that I personally brokered with the premier and the minister. And that's about taking our fate into our own hands. And we're keeping alive the prospect of a better, integrated, sustainable and accessible public transport system for our Sunshine Coast. And I'm sure everyone agrees that's going to be absolutely essential for the future. Now, unlike others, I made a very clear election commitment in the lead up to the 2020 council elections. And it's probably the most substantive public transport commitment of any elected representative from the... of any elected representative on the Sunshine Coast. And I'll tell you what I said. I'll push for the completion of the detailed business case for a mass transit solution and advocate for state and federal government investment in the preferred public transport solution that will link our suburbs and is in line with what our growing region needs and deserves. Now, on a two candidate preferred vote, 57% of people on the Sunshine Coast elect me as mayor. I'm not going to desert them now on one of the biggest issues we've got as a community for the future. How often are councils or governments generally criticised for not having the infrastructure in place before the people arrive, or at least as the people are arriving? Quite a bit. Well, you know, we're trying to avoid that and this is very forward thinking and I congratulate councillors on that. As for the suggestions about removing light rail from the five options, I think we'd be perpetrating a furphy there and also potentially compromising the integrity of our CEO and our staff. Our officers have worked tirelessly to undertake a thorough options analysis. We went out to the community with five options and we sought their feedback on all five options. To remove one or two of those options from the analysis now, when no commitment is actually being made to any one of those options, I'd describe that as doctoring the truth. It is incumbent on us all to provide the state, who is after all responsible for the public transport network, the ticketing, the rolling stock, the staffing, the investment of the dollars in tax that we pay them. And this region has become a real cash cow for the state government. It's up to our local state members to make sure we're getting our fair share when it comes to public transport funds for our region. We're making it easy for them. And to remove an option or options now is dismissive of the feedback, the time and the efforts of many members of our community who indicated their support for that option. May I remind everyone around the table of these obligations as an elected councillor and the local government principal with which we must all adhere. We have a responsibility to represent the region, all of our residents, 350,000, those that are here now and those that are going to come in the future. Removing one or two options now is effectively saying to those residents that supported or are interested in seeing it further explored, that their views are of no interest or significance to us. They're the people that elected us. And I ask each of you to consider this carefully today as you consider the report provided by our officers, but I would be happy to declare that I will certainly be supporting the officer recommendation. Thank you. I'm now going to go to councillor Law.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor, a couple of other questions, please, if I may. And if we go to a detailed business case, can a new option be considered that is not one of the five options that is in the options analysis? Because emerging technology that doesn't have a long history of data behind it to justify that it is the best option and it will create the best return on investment, for example, the light rail options, how can we be sure that the new emerging technology will be considered and could become the recommendation of a detailed business case?
Through you, Mr Mayor. You will see in the recommendations, there is a reference to taking account of emerging technologies. To an extent, we have the options analysis document already showed faith in a number of emerging technologies that, as I mentioned before, are not yet fully proven, but we knew enough about to include in the mix because of their promise of providing an appropriate level of service response to the problem. So I have no doubt that the detailed business case will cast the net even wider. And we would have heard a lot of the media coverage about the emerging hydrogen economy. There's a lot of very bold and brave pronouncements about the hydrogen economy. I suspect we're a few years away from those pronouncements becoming reality, but there's no doubt that as an alternative fuel source, that presents itself. And we have already had conversations with companies that are looking to utilise hydrogen as both an indirect via recharging batteries or a direct power source to the motors that would charge various types of mass transit technology. That process and line of inquiry would continue in the detailed business case and hence our reference to the need for it to do that. I don't have any doubt that any organisation, and this would almost certainly be done by a specialist business case advisor, as we have PWC as ours and DataMar will do the same, would cast the net wide, if only because some of those technologies provide such promise that to not consider them, and bearing in mind, we're talking, we're in 2021, this thing will commence operation probably six years from now. What will happen between now and then is very important to understand. So the detailed business case would look at all of those and you may well find a variant at least, if not a whole new option emerge as a result.
And you've just touched on my other question, which is 2027, is that the ideal start of construction or is that the ideal start of operation?
Through you, Mr Mayor, that would be on the timeframe I set out is when the system would commence operating.
And what's the likelihood of the state actually being ready to fund at that level that quickly?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I would hesitate to speculate. What I would say, however, and this is something else that the document makes mention of, which could not be done at the draft options analysis stage, is the decision around the 2032 Olympics and Paralympic Games. It is a time when considerations are going to be given by the state and in particular transport agencies to what they see as legacy projects. And so there is no better time to be putting forward a project that would create that type of legacy from an event like the Olympic Games. Whether that in and of itself gives cause for the state to fund this, I can't say. And there's no question, there's a lot of projects seeking priority for funding from the state. But what I can say for sure is we don't even get in front of them. We don't even get them to ask themselves the question, will they fund this if we don't send this through as a well-conceived and fully analysed options analysis process?
At least we're a lot of concerns, but if I just might make a few comments to the motion, please. I appreciate everything that we've heard and the options analysis and the detail that's there, but I'm left with a wide number of concerns about this. And yes, as you've rightly said, Mr Mayor, we are required to act for the whole of the Sunshine Coast. And I think there appears to be a history where council has done that quite well. But I see a continual in terms of public transport in the hinterland where there are only 30% of our population overall, a continuing lack of infrastructure coming because most of the people are choosing to live where most of the people already live. So most of the infrastructure goes there and we continue to be overlooked for public transport, which is what we're talking about today, so I'll stay on that. I came to the hinterland 20 years ago and there was a promise of rail duplication to Nambur. We're currently looking at our 13th report at a cost of $5 million and that piece of infrastructure exists. It's a very slow, it's a very old and it's only one track. And we're still on a promise in another report at a cost of $5 million and the state have got to match it at another $5 million. So there's another $10 million report and still public transport is woeful in the hinterland. Our transport levy goes to support many fantastic projects, one of which is actually operated by community volunteers because they would have no other transport to access the rest of the Sunshine Coast without the transport levy to support them, to volunteer their time to provide a very basic transport service for their community. It's a wonderful example of what the community can do. And I have huge concerns that we've got another significant region making project for the significant part of the region without consideration of what's going on elsewhere. And it leaves me in a really, really challenging position of how do I support my community and how do I support the whole of the Sunshine Coast? So am I supporting the motion or not? Yes, we must improve public transport. I've got grave doubts if this is the best way to do it, but if we don't put the options analysis forward, will we actually get another 20 years of nothing at all? At least this is a big, big stick to get the state government to finally do something. I've been personally and my family have been waiting 20 years for some improvements. It hasn't happened and my family is contributing to that awful car ownership problem at the moment because my teenagers are becoming car drivers and it's a real issue. We're not doing anything to support our active transport network. Today is National Ride to Work Day. Now, I would have actually part taped in that, but to actually do what I needed to do today, it was impossible to have a safe commute on a bike to do what I needed to do today. I could have probably done it unsafe, I could have done it in beautiful scenery along the coastal trail, but that wouldn't have done it quickly enough to actually get to this meeting on time or get to the other meeting on time. So we have got some serious problems with our public transport. And on the one hand, I don't want to support it because I'm not sure that light rail is supported by our community. So I would like part of our motion to reflect that we want to make it really clear that in our community engagement, it did not support light rail of any kind. I'm concerned that it's obsolete technology because once you put hard rails in the ground, you're a massive decision to say you're going to remove it again. But we need mass transport if we are going to do anything to change public transport for our people in a growing, growing society. I've spoken to the Community Strategy Leadership Group, which I sit on, they are fully supportive of mass rapid transit. I've spoken to the Multicultural Action Group, which I'm a member of, they fully support mass rapid transit. So yes, we must provide mass rapid transit. The Multicultural Action Group represent a bunch of people who don't have cars and who don't have car licences, so it's a problem. So on that, it's still really hard to determine, but public transport needs urgent attention.
Thank you, councillor Law. Councillor Suarez.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. I might ask another question, considering councillor Natalia's already spoken to the motion, but he raised something that I'd just like to explore a little further. With the detailed business case, should we go to that? We'll be exploring the other five options. How much weight does community feedback have in terms of infrastructure projects? I know when we build bridges or we do other roads, you know, it's essential infrastructure that has to go ahead and it's not necessarily determined or dictated by community sentiment. So how much weight does the community feedback have in determining which would be the preferred option through the detailed business case process?
Through you, Mr Mayor. The detailed business case process proceeds, as I mentioned before, in accordance with the business case development framework. That sets down an outline of not just when, but how community consultation should occur at each of the stages. And it's quite common for a detailed business case, in fact, becoming almost an essential element of a detailed business case to be subject to consultation. And that's for a number of very good reasons and there are reasons that we weren't able to actually address at the options analysis stage. And that is because at this point in time, while we can talk about a potential route for a mass transit system, we can't talk about the alignment because we don't know the system that we're going to be operating along that route. And it's at the time of the establishment of alignment that the detailed business case starts determining some of the essential questions that people had for us when we were out in consultation is, will this proposal affect my property? We don't know, we don't have the alignment. And there was a series of questions and I think in our in our response to that matter, when we had the special meeting in last August, we outlined the things about which we were really not able to engage at this stage. So those are the very things that would be the focus of, and very detailed things that would be a focus of committee input at the detailed business case stage. That would in and of itself look at the various options that would generate those alignments and give the community an opportunity to have a say about that. Arthur, do you have anything to add from your experience of detailed business cases?
Through you, Mr Mayor. At the detailed business case stage, you're taking the analysis that you would have seen in your options analysis, particularly the back end after the multi-criteria evaluation to the next level. So for example, the environmental assessment would be through field survey, assessing whether there's matters of national significance, matters of state significance. You're then looking through the social lens in terms of community impacts, other impacts, through the economic lens, through the technical lens. So a reference design will get worked up as part of the detailed business case, which shows detailed alignments, property impacts, et cetera. And that's at a very local level and that's what is consulted on. That reference design and the choice of mode is an interesting factor here because what could happen is there's a chapter at the back end, which is quite important, the affordability analysis, funding, your delivery options analysis. So that's why, as the CEO mentioned before, it's very difficult to answer questions about funding because your delivery model could be a model that may not require state government funding right up front. It needs to consider private investment options and a whole bunch of different options to move forward on. So as part of that detailed analysis, what could happen is you might go to market with a number of output requirements, saying this is what we want for the Sunshine Coast and the market might come back with modal solutions. They might say, based on those requirements, we might be able to meet it with a bus rapid transit solution or a light rail transit solution or a trackless tram solution. There is various ways this could play out over the next year in terms of the detailed analysis. And that's where it's critical, you know, through the state government process that that gets worked through. And as was said before, you know, the integrity of the process here is critical, that at this early stage, we're not dismissing options that could carry through and inform that market engagement. Because that's what happens at the next stage, you're engaging with major contractors and others around what do they think could be delivered, you know, could be your modal options, et cetera, through industry.
So essentially the answer is community sentiment doesn't dictate what will go on the ground.
It's one of many factors.
One factor.
Yeah.
So just in the process, when they go through all the future analysis, looking at all of those different criteria and different models, they'll come up with one preferred or suggested outcome. And then does that come back to council to endorse? Because obviously it's our community, it will require a funding commitment from us that we would have to, you know, decide on in the future how that happens. So if they come forward with a preferred recommendation, what's the role of council from there?
Through you, Mr Mayor. So as James touched on before, there'll be a MOU, an interface agreement set up with the state. Typically during the detailed business case stage for a project like this, you'll probably have three levels of engagement in terms of integrated project team, a project control group and an executive steering committee that maybe our CEO would sit on. And then through those mechanisms, there'll be likely engagements as in decision-making paths through that and then up to the state government and likewise through the CEO. The CEO would bring it back to council. That's just me forecasting ahead how it could look, but just based on other detailed business cases I've been involved in over the years, they typically set them up like that.
I might speak to the motion if I may, Mr Mayor.
Sure.
Like a number of other councillors have shared, I have some questions about the information that's in the report, some concerns. My preferred option is not light rail as well, but thinking regionally, I don't know what the correct mode of transport should be for that area. And I'll just quickly highlight, when I lived in Brisbane for a short period of time, I lived 13 kilometres away from lived 13 kilometres away from the city, Brisbane City. It was 23 minutes to drive it, and it was 14 minutes to walk and catch a train into the city. So a solution will save people time and money, but light rail is my, not my personally preferred option. And when I think divisionally as a divisional councillor, the reason I feel that way is because residents in my community will catch bus to begin with, and then they will have to do a mode change if it's not bus along that corridor. And I'm not sure, I don't have the answers, and hopefully the detailed business case will be able to provide some more of that. But my gut feel is, you know, if there's a different mode share arrangement, they may not decide to catch public transport from their closest point of where they live to get to where they've got to go. And that's why light rail is not my personally preferred option. So I have an issue with the word endorse the Sunshine Coast Mass Transit Options Analysis only because I don't support all of the information that's in that. I just want to put that on the record. And however, I do feel that we do need to take the next step because, as was mentioned by James Coates and as was mentioned by the, by the mayor, we do need to take our own fate into our own hands, or else we will be sitting here with no further improvements to public transport anywhere on the Sunshine Coast, is my gut feeling. So I'm very pleased, Madam CEO, that you've had those discussions with the state about our existing situation and what we will be doing outside of the mass transit system. I'm still really undecided, and I will wait till the last minute. This has been a really challenging one for councillors across the region, I think, to decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cox?
Oh, I thought you were going to say, break was before me.
I think you watched, you go out and come back in again. Okay, all right.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr Mayor, and through you. I just want to sort of say that a couple of questions that I've had already been asked and answered, so I won't repeat them. Couple of comments in people speaking to the motion as well, so I'm going to try not to repeat anything that other people have already raised, but I might need to just touch on a couple of points. I will start though by saying, one of the earliest slides in Mr Coates's presentation referred to the strategic alignment in our corporate plan, which we as a council endorsed back in February. And I'll just remind everyone that every single person here supported that. No one voted against it. So that little clause that was written up there on the screen at the very start of the presentation, we all knew about that because it was in the plan, and that's what we're progressing with today with this motion. I too attended a number of the community pop-up sessions, in fact, three of them, plus the intergenerational forum. So I feel that I've been well and truly committed to hearing what the general public had to say. My residents, the ones that obviously weren't members of certain groups, I wanted to hear directly from the people that maybe hadn't been influenced already, and so I felt that I got a very good understanding of what the general public had to say about this matter. I can tell you that there is still a lot of confusion between the, difference between the CAMCOS or the heavy rail that's been spoken about and the localised mass transit, which is predominantly what we're here to discuss. I know that the mayor's touched on this, but our state MPs have been advocating for the, the heavy rail, the CAMCOS, and I find it really interesting when I ask staff about whether or not they'd actually attended the invitation of the mayor to get a briefing from the staff, so they can hear the facts that they either declined or ignored, no other way to put it, ignored that opportunity to get briefed. And I find that really, really concerning for our community that our state MPs did not even bother to hear the facts. They've been advocating for something totally in opposition, and as we've already heard here today, it's not one or the other. We've got an integrated plan. This is just stage one. So I am just utterly confused. And I know that it's already been touched on, that we are regional councillors. So keep that in mind with any decision that you need to make, that we are making decisions for the betterment of the entire region. And I know that when you break that down divisionally, it can be hard because you'll have conflicting arguments. But interestingly, I think I'm the only councillor, actually, I know I'm the only councillor that lives in the urban corridor in the stage one. So if anyone knows about this process more, it's me and how it'll affect me and my neighbours and my community. And I'll tell you that question 14 in the engagement report breaks down the response by suburb, and, you know, it lists the number of respondents from very dissatisfied to very satisfied. So you've got that sort of spectrum of questions about all of the five options proceeding to the detailed business case. So when I look at that, I delve into my own suburbs that Division Three takes into consideration. And, you know, when I look at things like Bokarina, there was far more supportive, or somewhat satisfied and very satisfied than there were with the somewhat dissatisfied and very dissatisfied. So Bokarina, that, that's part of this, this area. Watulla, once again, it was quite similar in Watulla. Bettina, there was almost 100% more supportive in the responses, and Karamundi was actually over 100% more supportive.
Can I get you an extension, counsel?
Yes, please.
Councilor Dixon moved, second to Councilor Hungerford, all those in favour. That's carried unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, councillors. So, you know, for, for a community that's going to be impacted by this, the feat is to me that, you know, we, we can pull out the segments, as been already quoted before, and, and the statistics and modify them, but there we are. That's my division going to be impacted. It's, yeah, it leads me to, to believe that I've, I've got one option here, and that's to support this. I know in Appendix B, the Infrastructure Australia Stage Two Submission Template, it talks about without intervention, the annual cost of congestion, and we heard that in Mr Coates's presentation. You know, that on the community is going to treble between now and 2041, treble. That's a huge impact upon our community from an economic point of view, but not only economics, it goes on to state, without intervention, the economic, social, and environmental impacts will increase significantly over the next 20 years. So for me, I look at this and I go, I'm not simply prepared to let that happen on my watch as an elected representative here in the Sunshine Coast. So for me, I've, I've looked at the recommendations and those track changes that have been made from the draft options analysis to the one that we have here today, and I just cannot understand, if you're an elected representative on the Sunshine Coast, how you could not support this proceeding based on everything that I've seen. So that's where I am, and that's where my community is.
Thank you, Councilor Cox. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate the Deputy Mayor on his support of the motion. Initially, I think he covered a lot of aspects of the history and, and put forward a very persuasive argument. Having said that, I do also have some concerns about the recommendation. From a Division Five perspective, which is west of the Bruce Highway, most of my residents see very little value in this overall project, and I've, when I've said to them, how about, you know, when you want to go to the coast and you want to get around on the coast, can you see some value with it? Or from a tourism point of view? And they generally say, well, yeah. But Counselor David said something about, you know, there not being that we have got a significant public transport issue in the inland. Well, I must admit that the only way that we're going to improve that is if we improve, first of all, the public transport facilities on the coast, because it's not going to happen up there unless it happens down here. And congestion is becoming a significant problem. I've travelled 53 countries. I've travelled on almost every form of public transport except Shanks Park, and I've seen light rail buses with, that run on electricity, with wires and all those sort of things. And to be perfectly honest, I don't want to see a light rail system with overhead wires on the Sunshine Coast. I think it's against everything that we have, and it will destroy the amenity of a lot of our coastal strip. I agree that there's likely to be, before this business case is finalising, before it's finally funded, there's likely to be significant improvements in technology which may bring forward systems and, and transport systems which we haven't even thought of, or that we have thought of but will be proven to, or disproven as being viable. There is a significant problem with, with road widths on the corridor, particularly in areas such as over the headland, at Aling Centre Headland, but that's to be looked at further. The town plan densification, Counselor Natali talked about the additional dwellings. Well, yes, there will be proposed, there is proposed in this SEQ plan, an extra 2,240 additional dwellings in the existing urban area between 2017 and 2041. But the existing urban area also includes Biarwa, Lansbury, Malala, Nambol, Palmer's, Wombay, Yumundi, Gandena, Coolum. So, you know, like, it's not all going to be in that corridor, it's going to be spread I've had a lot of emails and texts from people in relation to these, this particular issue, and to be perfectly honest, some of them are a bit beyond the pale, and I found some of them quite insulting and abusive, and there is no excuse for that. Having said that, within those emails, there were some good points on occasions. They weren't, they weren't all bad. And do I, am I running up? No.
You're in the house, straight.
And I'm not the sort of councillor that will say, well, I don't agree with them, so bugger off, I'm not going to, I'm going to vote against them, all right? Or I'm not going to support what they're talking about. I look at the issues and think about them. I've been opposed to light rail with onboard, sorry, with overhead power supplies from the day it was first talked about. And I'd like to see, well, I'm going to move a minor amendment to clause nine of the recommendation, and I'd like to see us add a clause at the end after, after E, I guess.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just going to give you an extension first of all. And, and, so you want to move an amendment?
A minor amendment.
Yep.
We've seen the report, not the motion.
Yeah.
Or I'll move.
So first of all, we need to get Counselor Johnson an extension of time. Counselor Dixon, Counselor Cox, all those in favour? That's carried unanimously.
All right. Mr Mayor, the section that relates to the five different options, I'd like us to put at the bottom of that, the following. Please note, during community engagement, there was strong opposition to light rail, particularly light rail with overhead power supply. If I can get a second there.
Sorry, yeah.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Where would you like to see that within the motion?
Yeah, strong community opposition. Well, yeah, we could put it at the end.
Is it maybe B, endorse Sunshine Coast Mass Transit Options Analysis, P and note?
Yep. So B, and then we put and note. During the community engagement section in developing the option analysis, there was strong community opposition to light rail, particularly light rail with overhead wires, overhead power supply. I think I've covered the reason for wanting to do that. I think that reflects general, oh, is there a second?
Thank you.
So there was strong community opposition to light rail with, to light rail in, in particular, light rail with overhead wires.
Someone prepared to second that?
Shall I?
Counselor Dixon, thank you.
So I'll just speak briefly to it. I think that as far as light rail is concerned, that's one of the major concerns is about affecting the amenity of the Sunshine Coast. We're not, we're not putting handcuffs on.
No, no, just, just to be clear, Captain, Winston's moved an amendment, and he's speaking to that amendment, he's got a second, he's speaking to that amendment. You know? No, 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 this is, yeah. You can, you're entirely speaking against it if you wish, yeah. Carry on, counsel.
Mr Mayor and councillors, we're not putting handcuffs on the business case, we're just telling them in very clear language that there was opposition, significant opposition to that. And I think that the business case can then take it forward, they can either take notice of it, or they're at least warned that there was community opposition to it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would you like, so who's next on the list here? Counselor O'Prey? Did you want to talk to this amendment or not?
I wanted to speak to the other, the original motion.
Well, you can, you can.
But I can take an opportunity now to speak to this one if you like.
Yep, you can speak to the amendment.
To the amendment?
Yep, not to the.
No?
To the amendment, to the amendment, yep.
Although I have yet to put my questions forward and my opinions forward on the whole motion, Mr Mayor, I see this as a somewhat positive but possibly redundant step. I think it's a nice thing to do, but I don't think it's got any guts with it. I am happy to support it for you, my friend, Counselor Johnston, my apologies, but I really don't think it's going to have any weight, and I don't think it's got any real guts behind it, but I'm happy to support it.
Counselor Lansbury?
The officer?
Yep.
Of that.
And to do with the amendment?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so, James, can I just ask a question in particular to the wording of there was a strong community opposition to light rail, in particular, light rail with overhead wires, when we're just talking about the percentages that was in the options analysis?
Through you, Mr Mayor. My, my advice would be the term strong is not an accurate word. For something to be stronger, it has to be stronger than. For something to be stronger, it has to be stronger than the alternative. And as I mentioned earlier, the, the only statistical information, other than a lot of information we have, pay people's general support for the options that are six, the statistical information derives from interpretation of people's responses to six questions. Those six questions were in turn, as I said before, about each of the options and invited people to say what benefits and impacts they felt those options had. And their answers were converted into statements of sentiment. As I said, in none of those sentiments did the, did the, those who were negative represent the majority. And again, when you come to the question fourteen, where people are asked to express their level of satisfaction, which is a much more direct statement, those who were unsatisfied were almost exactly the same as those who were satisfied, forty-six percent to forty-five percent. So I do not know of an engagement process, I have never been involved in an engagement process in nearly four decades, or more than four decades, where that kind of almost exact same response from different perspectives, the same level of response, could be argued to be strongly one way or the other. So my, my view is that to characterise in that way is actually not supported by the facts. And that's my response to that question.
Thank you.
Thank you to the chair. You know, thank you for that explanation and, you know, I can't support that amendment. Thank you.
There was, you mean, significant opposition? I know the, I know you
Councillor, you, you've had your side. Councillor Babrovsky.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And Winston, councillor Winston, I understand what you're reaching for. But out of respect for the very rigorous process that has been undertaken by, I think, the entire team, it's, it needs to be a real contribution. And I completely, I think, agree that the word strong isn't justified. You could maybe have put in that, the analysis there, that the report's findings on community opposition should be noted. But to what end? All of the findings are going to be taken into consideration as part of this process. That's why they're in the options report in detail. It, it really is an attempt to say, this is a bit more important and we wanna draw attention to it. But the statistics don't back that up. So it, it really wouldn't be the right thing to do by this process now to ad hoc shift the recommendations without really solid ground to be on. And this isn't solid ground and I can't support it.
Thank you, councillor Natoli.
I want to thank councillor Johnson for actually bringing this forward because I think it does reflect clearly what the community feels about light rail. It's not just the overhead wires and, and the tracks and the ground. It changes everything about what we stand for as a community, the beach environment, the, the, the whole area here doesn't want to even have anything that reflects the Gold Coast where light rail is down there and that we hear those comments. They want the Sunshine Coast to remain individually different. And I think it's, it's been reflected. And I have seen, as people become more and more aware of this issue as it, as it's gone on, that there are people who were not engaged at the beginning, who are engaged now, that are saying to me, we do not want light rail. They all want better public transport, do not want light rail. And I think you're right. It does reflect that there is overwhelmingly concerns within our community about any light rail option being advanced and possibly becoming the preferred option that the community does not want.
Thank you, councillor Natoli. Councillor Suarez?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say that I think overwhelmingly is probably the incorrect analysis, I guess, of, of that sentiment. However, in the document fifteen point four, key findings and project response to the community consultation, there is bullet point there that says, options with tracks and wires receive the lowest numbers of positive comments. But since wireless light rail was viewed more favourably, it appears the wires are the greatest concern. And then in the table, in the following table, item number two in key points, there was a particular concern with the light rail with overhead wires option. So it was clearly reflected by the community that it was a concern. And it was one of the issues that I had with the report, that I didn't feel, feel that that was reflected strongly enough in the report. So I'll be happy to support this addition, whether it's, you know, going to carry any weight or not. I think we need to make it very clear to the state who are going to be doing the detailed business case, that that was of particular concern to our community.
Any further speakers to the motion? Amendments are in, my apologies. Councillors, I believe, based on what councillor Suarez has just said, reflects the work that has gone into all of the options. The detail is in the report. We don't need to repeat it again. The detail is in the report. Councillor Winston, do you wanna just wrap up quickly? On the amendment?
Just wrap up on the amendment. I respectfully disagree, Mr Mayor. I think it's important that we draw to the state government's attention, particular attention, the feelings of the residents, the majority feeling of those who responded, as was indicated by councillor Suarez, that there is strong opposition. And I, you know, based on the statistics that she mentioned, there is strong opposition to aspects of low rail and particularly where it has overhead cables and the impact that has on the amenity and the look of the Sunshine Coast. I know that some people are so committed to light rail that they don't wanna see any objection whatsoever or any emphasis put on the fact that this is, that, that we're sort of drawing to the state's attention, that that additionally is the concerns of the people on the coast. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. We'll put the amendment to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Natoli, councillor Johnston, councillor Dixon, Hungerford, O'Prey, Suarez and Law, those opposed? Councillor Cox, councillor Lansbury, councillor Babrovsky, councillor Jamison, the motions, the amendment is carried and the amendment now becomes the motion. Thank you, councillors. So I'm gonna go back to councillor O'Prey, who was next in line to speak to the previous motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I guess I have a question on standing orders firstly, in regard to now that the amendment has been approved, does that now reset everybody's ability to speak to this new motion?
Yes.
So everybody has now got an opportunity to speak again to the new amended motion? Yes?
I'd hope they didn't repeat themselves, but yes.
Mr Mayor, it's four fifty. Anyway, just wanted to be clear on that. Get comfortable. Mr Mayor, I had a couple of questions, but most of them have been tapped into and most of them have been answered. But one is still of concern to me and that's about, if we're sending all the five options to the state, how are we going to be convinced? How are we certain that the decision that's made around those tables, before it comes back to council, is of a preferred option for this councillor group and for the community?
Through you, Mr Mayor. As I've mentioned a few times in answers to questions and in my presentation, the preparation of a detailed business case follows the same process as we've been following so far, which is the business case development framework of both the state government and the Commonwealth governments. That sets down the, the process of evaluation, the criteria that are applied and how that's to be conducted. That has to be conducted against, objectively against those criteria. But having been conducted would produce a result which, as has been talked about before, under the arrangements that we would intend to establish, this council ameliorating to peruse the results of that analysis, it's loosely called a multi-criteria analysis and then economic evaluation, and to interrogate those, to raise issues and questions about the validity of that process of the experts that do it. I might add that, that the analysis of that, the way in which this was conducted to date in the options analysis, was conducted separate from an independent of council by an expert business case adviser, PWC. They are charged with conducting that process as objectively and fairly as possible. But it comes to a point where those who are responsible for, have that matter going forward, to see that matter go forward, which will include the council, would have an opportunity to see how that evaluation results in an outcome and, and input to it at that time.
Couple of other questions, Mr Mayor, thank you. Through you. So if, if in that instance when, and I'll talk about light rail, if the light rail option wasn't considered even number three option amongst the councillor colleagues or amongst the community, if we, if we knew what we didn't want, would we still put it forward? So if we knew for certain that we didn't want one of the options, would we still put it forward? Now, the reason I ask this, because Mr Mayor put a really interesting case in his speech about being dismissive of other people within the community that would like to see that, that detail done on that particular option. But I, I'm interested to know whether we as a council, A firstly, have we ever, with the information that we've got, we have never been asked, I mean, I heard Ted talk about, I think it was rapid transit options and I've been talking about trackless trams, we've never really consulted amongst ourselves on which way we sort of wanna go just yet to be direct out of those five options. So I guess what I'm asking is if we, if we knew what we didn't want, would we still put it forward to the state?
I think we have a responsibility to put forward a options analysis that shows that we've been faithful to the business case development framework and its requirements. That, in essence, requires options to be put forward that, that the term is used, satisfy the service needs. In other words, it, it, the options are those that are seen as doing what we want this to do, which is to provide for the quality of public transport we need on the Sunshine Coast. And so even if we don't want to see that as an outcome, it's, it's impossible to exclude it because it will satisfy that service need. And unless and until it's been through the process of examination, we don't really fully know how that service need is best satisfied and how that business case will produce that outcome. So we might well find, when we get to the end of the detailed business case process, that yes, another option is the one that ends up being preferred, or it might well be a light rail variant, as we've discussed. At that time, it's quite possible that the attraction of that and the analysis and assessment of it will prove very seductive to this group. I don't know, but until we've been through it, we won't. And so saying right now that we don't like this is not enabling it to be fully investigated to the point where, you know, we could categorically say whether we know what this is. I mean, we have an impression about what light rail might be, we have an impression about what light rail with, without wires might be. But as we've seen, there are technologies emerging. There are hybrids of all of those and they could well emerge and it would be under the heading of a light rail, but it could be a variant of that that we go, wow, that's really good. And we've looked at technologies already, we've seen those emerge. To categorically say now that we don't wanna look at that, we just don't wanna know about it, I think would be a big mistake. And I'm thinking here of a group we spoke to not so long ago from California called, strangely enough, TIG slash M, that has a variant of a light rail project that uses a system that generates hydrogen fuel through a package plant that directly powers the vehicle, no overhead wires, no need for any recharging along the network, runs a thousand kilometres across the day and has a whole range of other aspects that are very attractive. To say now, we don't want that, I mean, it's still, it's been used in a few places around the world, it's still being tested, it's still being understood. They're the sort of technologies we will look at further. If we categorically say now, that's off the table, what if we robbed ourselves of the opportunity to do? To think about a variant of that that actually would do the job spectacularly well, potentially.
Mr Mayor, I might speak to the motion if I can and I'll be brief, okay? Firstly, Mr Mayor, through you, I'd like to congratulate our staff on a very testing twelve months, particularly with the consultation period. Please, thank you, teams, because I sat in one of the busiest ones, I was at Sunshine Plaza and I saw the inundation commentary and I think that our staff did an exceptional job. Mr Coates, I'd like to congratulate you on your presentation today as well, very articulate in all your answers and particularly your chosen words in some of the questions, as noted. I think there's no question that today the information's thorough and very much informative. Thank you. Mr Mayor, my observations across my communities have been a lot of angst and a lot of signings and a lot of placards for no light rail, no light rail, no high rise. Now, I've been experienced in placards and things for many years on many different subjects and it doesn't really carry a lot of weight with me. But when people have got the anxiety amongst themselves to talk about our natural assets and particularly Alex Hill, that's of concern to me personally and as, and as an elected representative for the whole of region, looking after our, our natural assets. So the wires, the tracks, all those, those infrastructure elements have not been appealing to me personally, but I do understand that they may well be necessary if that option is taken up. What I would like to say particularly about my preferred options and the people that I've been talking to, it's all about being environmentally sound, it's about the electric, it's about the trackless trams, which hasn't really been tapped into enough, I don't believe, and I'm really interested on the outcomes of that. And I think the Sunshine Coast needs to be seen and constantly seen as the leader of taking on these new technologies and taking on and embracing what's new in the world. And we do that in so many other realms of our, of our business. So I just wanna make it very clear that my observations of, of the community that's around me and my, my division and my adjoining divisions has been very much against the light rail and has been very much, very vocal for us. So I wanna thank you for that, Mr Mayor, and again, I wanna thank you all the staff, thank you.
Councillor Natoli?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wanna move a further amendment, that we B, delete endorsed the Sunshine Coast Mass Transit Options Analysis, just delete that part of the line, appendix A. And then C one, on the first line, after Sunshine Coast Mass Transit Options Analysis, include to advance only three options to the detailed business case, rapid bus transit, quality bus corridor and trackless trams. If I have a second, I'll speak.
Tom, can I ask you a question? Mr Mayor?
Question? Yes.
Just through to this frame, does this constitute an amendment or is this an alternative motion? Because it seems to change the general intent of the, the motion.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Given that councillor Natoli is proposing to delete that part in B, which would endorse the analysis as it is. It's an amendment. It is an amendment and it could be considered as an amendment. So there's only three options to the detailed business case. So an amendment can't attract from So an amendment can't detract from the motion as it stands? So, Mr Mayor, if that takes away from the motion as it stands, it wouldn't be accepted as an amendment?
I, I believe it does detract from the motion that stands, and it is an amendment that really isn't an alternative for other amendment, so I don't think it can be allowed.
Okay, yes.
Mr Mayor.
Yeah.
James talked about all five options that we are progressing, all meet the satisfaction in terms of the criteria of the assessment. And I think we are entitled as a council to be able to choose whether we want to advance all five options or no options. There's nothing to suggest that we have to advance any options. So I don't see, I'm not suggesting that we're not going ahead with a detailed business case, I'm suggesting that in terms of the reflection of the community's concerns about light rail, this amendment enables us to continue with the detailed business case and, and, and give the community the satisfaction.
Please sit down, Counselor.
Counselor, Mr Mayor, thank you. The vice chairman. I thought you were courteous enough to let him respond, but he is now re-prosecuting the case. Made a ruling that this is not a suitable amendment, it's an alternative. Would you like to confirm that that's your position?
Yeah, that is my position.
So.
If you, if you want to, as I said to you earlier, Counselor, if you wish to put forward an alternative.
It, it dismounts, I've foreshadowed that I'm going to do this.
You'll move what?
I'll move basically what I've placed up there.
All right, well, let's remove the yellow from that for the moment.
No, that's, that's as it is, that's where we're at.
Ah, sorry.
That's where we're at. But we'll take that off because that is the live motion. Thanks.
Okay, I'm up to Counselor Dixon.
Counselor Natale just asked a question. I made a statement rather that it would be putting forward and, and putting on, I'm not sure of the exact words that he said, but it would be putting forward after the decision was made. Does that have to wait till after this first vote, or can that be done now?
No, we're dealing with this motion.
So that we're back to the original with Winston's? Yep, so for absolute clarity, we're back to the original motion with Winston's addition.
Yes. We're, we're dealing with the amended motion that we voted to make the motion. Okay, Counselor Dixon.
Mr Mayor, it's been a good opportunity to actually sit back today and listen before I speak, because usually I speak upfront, and it's been a three and a half hour debate, which just goes to show the community that it doesn't matter where you fall on this discussion today, that everyone in this room is passionate. And I just want to firstly start by acknowledging the staff. Whilst I don't agree with all of their positions, they've worked very hard, they've been very professional, and as you can see and hear from today, they're very much across the subject that they are passionate about. I also want to recognise community groups. I understand we've all heard from Oscar, M Tag, and Beach Matters, and they're all volunteer groups, so they've all provided a lot of feedback to us. Again, whether or not you like their views, they've certainly taken the time to do what others haven't. Wherever you sit on these options, there's one clear theme, and the theme is that everyone believes there's a public transport issue on the Sunshine Coast. I haven't met anyone yet who actually has said, yeah, I like the way things are, just leave them, not one person. Furthermore, too, that people have said that they find public transport limited, time-consuming, and not reliable, but it's the same feedback that I've heard for the last 15 years on council. As an example, I live in Harmony, and it's the second largest growth front on the Sunshine Coast in terms of residential planned ceiling lots. Takes 43 minutes to walk from my home to the clearest, nearest, I should say, the nearest bus stop, and that's in one of our biggest greenfield residential estates. And the state government doesn't even have the decency to give us a public bus service in one of their driven greenfield estates. So it shows you the problem that we're dealing with, it just continues to compound. As many people know, state government is in charge of public transport. You know, council's just doing this because the state's not doing their job, and I'll be very clear about that, that is the truth. I'd like anybody to try and dispute that. Again, 15 years of evidence will prove otherwise. I've not yet met a person who doesn't support CAMCOS. I'm sure they're out there, I haven't met them though. Everyone I've talked to supports CAMCOS because although we've got 5% of our region that travels south to go to Brisbane for work, there's still a lot of us here, and we're going to need a service that looks after the Sunshine Coast. But everyone I've talked to thinks that CAMCOS is part of the solution, and it's great to see, although state and federal members have been critical, they've all said we're fully aligned and behind CAMCOS. And the proof will be in the pudding, there's a federal election around the corner next year, and hopefully we'll see some significant money for CAMCOS to Maruchid or CBD because they're all behind it, and I'll take them at their word, because it actually informs part of the position that I'll take today. As many know, the state government's also driving population targets, 200,000 new people, new residents will call the coast home, and if anything's taken from COVID, we know why, because it's a great place to live, and, you know, with working from home, people can enjoy their backyard, enjoy where they live and not be cooped up in high rises in the city. But we have a responsibility with that growth. We need our road systems, we need our public transport to cope, but we also need places for people to live. That's the most important part, particularly with homelessness at the moment. There's a lot of homelessness, and not only that, but there's a lot of people who can't get a home, even if they got the money, they just can't get a rental. What some people are doing with their rent is morally wrong, but that's their decision. In my view, growth should occur in a way that doesn't compromise our future generations, either now or in the future. To that end, I've seen no proposals, nor would I support any proposals that would see us anything like the Gold Coast. Now, there's, there's a clear view that I've got out of all the emails, and I've had hundreds, if not thousands, of points of contact, people don't want us to become the Gold Coast. But in my colleague's defence here today, I've never heard any of my colleagues in this room ever talk about, you know, whether you're pro-development or not pro-development, I've never heard them say they want high rises on the beach. In fact, I've never heard that discussion from any of our staff. And I talked to strap planning and DA, and they're not aware of any proposals for high rise on the beach or within the corridor. They've been very, very clear that 62% of that infill density will particularly be medium density outside of the Maruchid or CBD. That's a fact, that's just a fact. I've done a lot of homework on this. Most notably was an invitation I took up, I need an extension if I can, please.
Someone have your move, Counselor Suarez, Counselor Natale, second of those in favour? Carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. I took up the offer for a tour. I had a really good tour in the last month, I think it was, and the team organised a fantastic day out on the Gold Coast and Brisbane, and I know many of the councillors here today actually went on that. And I remember being on light rail when it was first instigated on, on the Gold Coast. It was really good because up until now, I'd been very, very pro-light rail, because that's all we've done, you know, ever since the Abbott Council and going through your council, Mr Mayor, it's all been around light rail with a focus on the corridors or transport because that's the best we had at the time. And I've been behind that because we need to move people around, albeit I didn't know we had other options to look at seriously on the table. During this consultation, I've taken phone calls, emails, Facebook posts, Facebook messages, I've attended the generational forum at USC, and I went to a pop-up event at Sippy Downs. So I've talked to everybody I can, if I've gone to a community meeting and neighbourhood watch, I've just asked them what they think. And I can tell you right now, the figures we're hearing in the, the options analysis and the feedback is, is for some part true. People are very divided, it doesn't matter who you talk to, some people love light rail because they've used it on the Gold Coast, some people want dedicated bus lanes because they've used that elsewhere, some people want, you know, bus rapid, completely separated, away from the roadway because it's reliable, they've used it in Brisbane. But the one theme, again, to reiterate, is that everyone wants better, better public transport in the region, I've just heard that. Again, haven't met anyone that doesn't agree. Let me say that I've heard futuristic views, I've heard about autonomous driverless cars, airborne transit through drone technology, underground rail. Some have even gone as far to say that they would like no change on the Sunshine Coast, and that we should stop all population growth and build no new services. In fact, if we're going to build anything, they want us to build a wall. They want us to essentially shut the area down. Some ask me if the $500,000 was a waste of money. I clearly say that without spending that money, I wouldn't have heard from the public, I genuinely wouldn't have heard because we wouldn't have done any of the community consultation events that we have. And again, whatever side you fall on, we've done a lot of engagement, good and bad, we've heard different views, but that's what we've done. I'd like to make the comment that I wholeheartedly acknowledge the growing congestion problems across the region, and in fact, I accept that council has a very important role to play. Going back to the earlier tour I mentioned, I was exposed to multiple transport options. Several days after this tour, I started to form more clear opinions around what I would like to see rolled out on the coast. Like Counselor Hunterford, I don't feel that light rail is the best option or fit for the region. I'd like to see bus rapid transit or other bus-related improvements, dedicated lanes in areas across the region would be something we could do now at a very low cost, it's something that we could achieve particularly on Nicklum Way tomorrow, if the state government wanted to do their job. Hearing the thoughts and concerns from people, I started to firm up my mind about an objection for light rail, like many in this room. Some of these concerns surrounded steel tracks, wires, and noise from light rail. This was also raised as one of the main reasons against from many of our groups objecting in the community. In short, they continued to tell me it was about lifestyle and amenity, and I don't like to say it, but people like to remind me that they don't want to become the Gold Coast. I hear it all the time, they continually ask us for a point of difference. Perhaps we can aim for something better, that's healthy, smart, and creative. Whilst I acknowledge the views of people in this room, sending out the options analysis may not be committing us to a future direction, but in my view it is, because if you support the options in the paper today, you're telling the government, when the government comes asking, if you support something, they will acknowledge that the council sent a report to them with all of the five options. So they're going to turn around and they're going to blame council if they ever make a decision, because it's the easiest thing that governments do, they always point the finger, well, it was okay for the Sunshine Coast council, you said it was all right, so we're going to blame you for it. If the community's got any anger towards the issue, go and talk to council because it was your council that backed light rail. And although I've heard alternate views today, that's my feeling on the matter. Today is an opportunity to send a clear message to the state government that I won't be supporting light rail for an option for the Sunshine Coast both now and into the future. And Mr Mayor, I'll quickly finish here before I run out of time. If previous speakers who are in favour of light rail are correct in what they say, today I'm voting against the majority of Sunshine Coast residents who I'm led to believe are in favour of light rail. Today it could be said that I'm not making a popular decision based on previous speaker's logic. Although there is a lot more to say, Mr Mayor, and I'm out of time, I'd like to thank the, the chamber for its time today.
Thank you, Counselor Dixon, Counselor Lansbury.
Thank you, through the chair. Before I was elected, I owned a business one street off Nicklum Way for 24 years, and travelling Nicklum Way every day and watching the congestion grow is an amazing growth, and the amazing feedback that I received with my customers over 20 years was one of the reasons why I put my hand up to be elected, to fight for improved infrastructure, better road connectivity, and among a host of other issues that we need here on the Sunshine Coast. The, we're aware of 53% of households have the access to over two vehicles. We've spoken, the mayor's just spoken about our vehicle ownership, on the coast here we have 260,000 vehicles registered. That doesn't include 1,100 buses, 16,000 motorcycles, plus trailers and conditional vehicles as well, which adds up, and these were figures from 30th of June last year, of 366,000 vehicles that are registered on the road. And by 2040, we'll have 140,000 extra vehicles, so what will we see along Nicklum Way is my biggest concern when we move in the future. I know our integrated transport strategy is committed to maintaining that connectivity and our lifestyle, and we've got to really fight hard for our change in our mode share, which is, obviously, we've been so many briefs about it, and it will be an opportunity to really try and engage with our community that they need to look at other alternative modes of transport on the Sunshine Coast. And 70% of destinations travelled on Sunshine Coast is less than 10 kilometres. Our red, red strategy as well is all about providing that integrated public transport system between our major population and our employment growth centres as well. And we've already heard how much congestion costs us each year. I have spoken in this chamber about the alignment, which I did mention about Alexander Headland and along the beach, and I am opposed to any form of fixed mode of transport along our beachfront. I've already spoken about that and made my position clear on that. But I will be supporting this motion today, and just last night I was at the Clounder High School with over 200 students at a sports award, and it was looking around the room, thinking what legacy are we going to leave those kids? Are they going to be able to afford a vehicle? Are they going to be afforded housing on the Sunshine Coast? And from a regional perspective, Counselor Cox has spoken about our ability to represent our region, not just our division. But apart from that, we've really got to head towards zero emissions, and that's our priority as a healthy, smart, creative region, and I look forward to our options analysis moving forward to a detailed business case.
Thank you, Counselor Lansbury, Counselor Babroski.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Counselors, I, I now believe I have a reason to be somewhat optimistic that we are looking like we're going to move this through to a detailed business case. And for that reason, I'd like to ask you to imagine the Olympics on the Sunshine Coast in 2032. CAMCOS is in place and gets people here, mass transit is here and moves them around the coast. And I ask you, was that the future that the young people had in their minds when they provided their feedback on the survey? I think that would be a future worth the dedication and hard work of our truly remarkable mass transit team, past and present. Can I add my admiration and thanks for their dedication throughout this process and to all of the stakeholders involved? And it is a future, I think, that is a product of all the contributions, the ones you agree with or don't disagree, agree with rather, from the community, the stakeholders, over the past decade. Today, our role is to endorse the shortlist before you of the variable technologies, not to pick one and not to exclude one or any future variant that you may have heard about. Today is to approve the amended report incorporating the community's feedback, and today is to go into a partnership with the state on the detailed business case. I did want to mention a couple of points because I thought the high-rise fear was very well addressed today, and I, I don't want to re-prosecute it, but we have heard that zoning changes and hence density are not an outcome of the DPC. That can only be part of the planning scheme process, although the two processes we've heard do converse with each other. The other key point I wanted to emphasise is this notion that it only benefits the coast. I find that a little bit weird because I've been in the transport portfolio for nearly 10 years, I'm division one. And I went into the transport portfolio, if you remember, councillors, because I knew that transport for the region was critical to us all. And clearly, this is only about, we're, we're really focusing on stage one of the master plan, and if you have any concerns about the, the general benefit, you need to focus on the master plan because that's where this leads. And we've also heard that we will move, should we approve this report today, immediately to improve the public transport offer and the network performance for all of our region as part of the, the recommendations. So councillors, we, we do come to points in time when you know, you went into politics to make a difference. This is a particularly special one of those moments. Councillors, I urge you to support this recommendation. Yeah, sorry, the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Babroski. I don't have any further speakers. Going to go to Counselor Johnson to close.
Mr Mayor, I'd just like to say to councillors, I hope they'll vote for this resolution, and, and then we can move the whole issue forward, and hopefully sometime not too far down in the future, we'll finish up with a much better public transport system than we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors, I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Counselor Law, Suarez. Councillor Law, Suarez, Hungerford, Johnson, Cox, Lansbury, Babrowski, Jamison, those opposed? Councillor Prey, Dixon, and Natoli, the motion's carried. Council, thank you for that debate, a long session, but I think a well-informed outcome. I thank our officers very much for all the work that they've put into this. I know along the way, each of the councillors have remarked on that. Thank you very much. James, your presentation was very good, thank you. Thank the members of the gallery for being here to witness today's proceedings. And I'll close the meeting at 5:22. Safe travels home.